Well, hello. Who is that?
That's why I was waiting.
Oh, Reno?
Oh, my God, it's Reno. I didn't recognize you guys. You're all dressed up.
We're all there. We don't look like good looks, huh?
You look fantastic. Wow. Good morning, Reno. Okay. Let's see. Madam Clerk, we are now going to begin the City Council meeting Wednesday, October 9, 2024. I'm going to send it over to you. Hold on one second. I have a different agenda. And I would love it if you would lead us in the pledge this morning. All right?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to call roll for Wednesday, October 9, 2024 Reno City Council meeting. Councilmember Breckis, Doer, Martinez, Ebert absent at this time, Taylor, Reese, Sheevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right. Thank you so much. And then I'm going to send it right back to you for public comment.
Would you like to go into proclamations?
Oh, that's right. Yes, and we have a very, very special proclamation. I'm excited for this one. But before we do that, I have noticed, and Ms. Jackie brought it to my attention, that the Comms Department has received, like, three or four awards in the last month. So Cassie, come on up, because I would love to recognize that. These are very cool. I know you hate that. I know you hate that, but we need to celebrate the wins.
We do.
Because we take a lot of heat for a lot of different things.
All the wins, big and small.
So I want to make sure that we continue to celebrate the positivity.
Oh, well, thank you so much, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. I'm Cassie Harris, Communications Program Manager, and really honored to be here today to celebrate some amazing wins. I'm joined by almost our entire Comms team. We have Dawn Dainan, who's our Management Analyst, Natalie Lumbow, who's our very talented graphic designer, our two Public Communications Specialists, A.J. Miller and Diego Zarazua, and the newest member of the Comms team, Patty Stone, who's our Communications Assistant. And unfortunately, our fearless leader, amazing director Rebecca Venus is on vacation this week, so she's unable to be here, but she is really the driving force behind the success of our team, so I want to make sure to recognize her. As you mentioned, the Comms team recently received three communications awards. The first was a Savvy Award from 3CMA for our Junior Ranger Guide. So if you haven't seen the guide yet, I highly encourage you to check out a copy. It encourages people to get outside, explore the city's 87 parks, and teaches kids to be good environmental stewards. It also was a way to introduce the community to our Ranger program. And many of the guide's illustrations were hand-drawn by Natalie. And then we received an Award of Excellence from 3CMA for the "We Make Reno Loveable" campaign. You've probably heard the popular phrase used around our workforce, "We make Reno more than just livable, we make it lovable." And this is a sentiment that really resonates with our team and showcases the passion that all of our employees bring to the work that they do every day. And then last but not least, we received the Governmental Media Outlet of the Year presented by AAF at the Best of the West Media Awards, and this is for our social media presence. So I think all of you follow us on social media, and if you do, or you don't yet, you should, because you'd be in for a treat. We strike the perfect balance between fun and engaging, but also some really informative, you know, public safety information and updates. It's not only humorous, but it's accessible. So you'll see bilingual graphics, a lot of Spanish translations. We're really working to make sure that our community has the information they need when they need it. These awards are a reflection of the dedication and heart that these individuals pour into their work every single day. We really appreciate this opportunity to kind of shed some light on the work that we do, and thanks to all of you for letting us do this work and believing in the value of transparent and consistent communication. So thank you so much.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Isn't the raccoon your brainchild? Is that your brainchild?
Sure.
I actually, I know that sometimes, especially on social media, there's a lot of negativity, and I've had more positive feedback from, what do we call him?
It's Feisty Mike.
Feisty Mike, yeah, that's right.
Actually, there's one behind your monitor. Right, right, right.
Right where?
Behind you.
Oh, by here. Oh, he's back here. I'm all aware. So anyway, it's very cute, and I actually had a, like, a mom that said her daughter is now following us on social media because of Feisty Mike.
Oh, good.
So I love that we're getting a younger demographic starting to pay attention, and so congratulations to all of you, because I know it does take a team, so that's fantastic. Good job.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead.
May I just offer a few other comments? First of all, I want to thank Dawn specifically. I really appreciate the What You Need to Know this Week emails. I think it's a really integral part of what we do and communicate to the city, and there's so much information. Sometimes it's more information than I can digest, but I do think it's a particularly important part of the communications. I also wanted to thank all the team for a couple of different specific things. One was the grand openings that we've had surrounding the Public Resource Safety Center, the Moana Springs Aquatic Center. These were particularly heavy lifts for you all, and I think they were incredibly well-done, and so kudos to the team for being able to pull that off. And then the last thing I'll just say is that, you know, social media is both the cesspool of humanity and also a beacon of hope at times. And I will say that the efforts that you've undertaken during the Davis Fire were also particularly important, and it matters when people engage with social media, because yes, there's a lot of people who use social media for bad, but you all are out there changing and sharing the story of the city, and I think it's very important, especially when it does lead to increased engagement, awareness of what we're doing. So kudos to the entire team. It's not surprising that you've been so highly regarded by your peers and different organizations that notice the work, but we also all notice the work. So thank you so very much, and congratulations to the team.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I wanted to add something, too. Go ahead. All right. I just, everything he said, ditto, but I just also wanted to say, we have a lot of other special events, too, that are not, such as the hazardous waste pickup, and special cards that have to go out to all kinds of neighborhoods, and everything is very timed. You know, it has to get there in a certain time. I also think we've really been doing a better job in general on public outreach with our website. When we have special emerging issues, we make special sections of our website, and I know that's a culmination of you, IT, and our liaisons, but that is incredibly important to have accurate information and timely information out there. And so I just, I think we're doing better, and I think it is in large part to what you are doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Aw, thank you so much.
Go celebrate. Yay, day off.
We're good at that, too.
Hashtag, #MayorMadeMeDoIt. All right. Okay. Now we have a special proclamation, and I'm actually, I'm very excited, well, not excited, it's actually kind of unfortunate, but Angela Davis, come on up. Really appreciate you, and for, you did a phenomenal event last week. I want you to tell us a little bit about this, but this is a proclamation for breast cancer, and one in seven women are diagnosed with breast cancer, and it's absolutely terrifying. All of us would probably have friends, family, loved ones. I lost my sister to breast cancer, and so thank you so much for recognizing this, and everyone for their advocacy. Really appreciate it, but we have to continue to tell more and more and more women, and men, and men, to get their breasts checked. So thank you so much, Angela. Take it away.
Oh, thank you for having us here. I don't think there's anybody in this room that hasn't had their life impacted by breast cancer. I personally have as well, lost a sister-in-law recently, so it's very real for us. So we're thrilled to be here and to be able to share this time with you. I'm joined today with Adriah White. She is our Risk Manager, and Vanessa Robinson, she's our HR Business Partner. Vanessa was really instrumental in bringing the Mammo van to the city of Reno on October 1st, so it's really no secret that, much like you, we are really passionate about the safety and health and well-being of our employees. And so to that end, we started the Wellness Week and expanded it to include Risky Business Day, and today we're wrapping up those events as we speak, and it started with our kickoff on October 1st. So Adriah, turn it over to you.
So to tell you guys a little bit about the event itself, so Risky Business Day and Wellness Week was a collaborative effort between the Human Resources Department and dedicated volunteers that we had across the city, as well as 36 vendors that we had. And as Angela said, the Nevada Health Center's Mammo Van joined us this year, giving employees the opportunity to access safety and wellness resources that are available to them so that we can be well at work. And as a result of these efforts, hundreds of employees were able to learn about and access wellness resources, have lab work completed, obtain vaccines, and as again Angela said, obtain those, oh my gosh, mammograms. Sorry. So this means that we were able to have early detection available for our employees, our friends, our family members, coworkers. And I'll turn it back to Angela.
So additionally, city employees supported our community through food donations to the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, and we hosted a successful fundraiser for Nevada Health Center's Mammo Van. So it was a really big two weeks for us. It's our honor today to read this proclamation, naming October City of Reno Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And Vanessa, since you were so instrumental in making that breast cancer awareness available, I'm going to have you read.
Thank you. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains a cause of cancer deaths among citizens and staff members of the city of Reno. And whereas many of us know someone dear or have family members who have or have had cancer, and whereas thanks to early detection and better treatments, mortality rates have steadily decreased, and knowing what may contribute to breast cancer symptoms, diagnosis and treatments are vital for its prevention. And whereas having affordable access to screenings and early detection for all women is essential in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with our family members and friends, recognizing all who have joined their loved ones in fighting their battle, as well as the advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers whose cause and hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. And whereas by educating ourselves and supporting innovative research, we will improve the quality of life for all citizens affected by breast cancer and one day defeat this terrible disease. Now therefore, on behalf of Hillary Sheevy, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby declare October 1, 2024, City of Reno Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. I'm so impressed how you guys read these proclamations now. I mean, they're like seamless, perfect.
Well, thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Because I know you get to that part where it's my name, and it's really confusing. You're like, who am I?
We practice.
So, but again, thank you so much. You guys wear pink beautifully. I really appreciate all that you guys do, and the accessibility of healthcare is really, really critical. It's something I'm passionate about. That's why we've done free skin checks, you know, free mammograms, those things. So anyone that is here that cannot afford access to a mammogram, please reach out to me, because we have partners that will make sure that you have access for free. So men and women, so please know that. If anyone cannot afford it or does not have insurance, you know, there are a lot of people out there uninsured, but we have the resources in this community, and I'm really grateful for the partnership with the Nevada Cancer Coalition, and so they will help us pay for those and anyone that needs access. So just everyone know, you have no reason not to go, because we can get it for free for you. So anyone, all right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Go ahead, Councilman Reese.
Madam Mayor, before Ms. Davis leaves, I always get to take the opportunity, when she's in the room, to thank her. In spite of the fact that last week she was operating this incredible undertaking for our employees, she was also responding to all of the employee questions that were about elements of that, and quite frankly, my questions were not about that, but I will just say, Ms. Davis, you continue to impress me every time I interact with you. It is an absolute privilege to work with you in the HR field, and I know that I am not alone when the employees tell me that they have issues that they need to resolve. You are on those issues, and you're helping them to resolve them, oftentimes pointing out the things that we didn't even know. So you just keep being a shining star in the organization, because you are a diamond, absolute joy to work with.
Yeah, where did we get you?
Illinois.
Well, good.
Thank you so much.
Their loss, our gain.
You know, we're able to do things like our Wellness Week due to the support that we receive from you, from our directors and leaders. You know, it's a, it takes a village to make sure that our employees are well and safe, so we appreciate you as much as you have articulated your appreciation for us, so thank you.
So much. All right. Good job. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first item today is opening public comment. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, https://links.reno.gov/council109. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you state your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council Rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter today is Ron Trevor, followed by Gary Meloncon, followed by Terry Brooks.
All right. Good morning. I love these updates.
Good morning. My name's Ron Trevor, and I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak this morning. I'm a representative of SAVE, which stands for Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort. They work for the Reno Police Department. And today I've got the recaps for the hours volunteered for third quarter 2024. SAVE currently has 71 active members, another three in training, and during the third quarter, there was a total of 4,790 hours volunteered by members of SAVE. This represents savings of $121,718 to the city of Reno. Some of the key areas that were covered are as follows. We had 7,760 citizen contacts. We had 1,629 48-hour notices placed, or no, 72 hours placed on abandoned vehicles, 722 school patrols, 363 handicap violations. There were 26 stolen vehicles or fictitious plates located and turned over to the police department, and that's all I have. Thank you. That's it.
That's a lot.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gary Meloncon, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Connie Silveira.
Hello, my name is Gary Malonson. I live at 11565 Old Virginia Road. I'm back again today because the last council meeting, we asked you to put a hold on the Vintage Grant for $1.4 million. Hilliard was going to go out and talk to some of the people at our apartment and some of the other apartments. Well, when we got done with the meeting, this thing made it all over the United States. I'd like to read a paragraph from the Reno local news and event. Hilliard said, "Hilliard said greenhouse partners at Vintage hire the property management company for each complex. He said that they learned about the issues of the residents are facing on Monday, and that yesterday Vintage issued the management company a 60-day termination notice if corrections are not made. They are very interested in fixing these problems," Hilliard said. "The management manages several thousand units for Vintage, not only here but across the United States, and Vintage has threatened to remove them from all the projects. We're asking that you put the grant on hold for 60 days. Let's find out if they can fix the issues. We have 27 14-day notices to the landlord. Tomorrow, the 14 days is up, excluding weekends. They've only handled about 5%. There's no way that they're going to finish them all. What we're asking for is let's get the 60-day hold, and let's find out, because if they don't do it and they get terminated, what do we do with the grant?" So what we're asking is tenants, and here's some of the things that they have cleaned somewhat the carpets, they haven't cleaned them right, they haven't fixed any of the doors left. "We feel we should live in a safe, clean, and secure building. We don't have any of those issues." They have, the outside windows in the building hasn't been cleaned yet. We still have rodents in the walls and ceilings. They haven't repaired the area where the rodents are coming in. We've had people looking at it, but nobody's repaired it. The sliders on the chairs are not replaced yet. We've already had one person get hurt. It doesn't seem to be an issue. They say they got cameras on order, but we haven't seen them yet. We have a major drug issue. We have meth labs, we have drug dealers, we have everything. The management says there's nothing they can do. I don't understand why they can't do something. We have a manager that lives on the property. We could call the police, but they're not there to help us with the police. They're there eight to seven. And some of the things they have done, they turned on the TV up front, but they haven't programmed it yet. That's an events TV. The hall smelled really good, but they haven't cleaned the baseboards yet. And, you know, they're working on it. There's a couple ACs they did, but there's no way these 54 items on the 27 notices will be done by tomorrow, because Friday we can turn them in. But we don't want to turn them in. We just want our place fixed, and we're asking for, to grant that 60-day, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much. I know Councilwoman Doer has been on top of this, right? How's it going?
Well, I think.
30 seconds.
Sorry. I think what Gary said is accurate. Some of the things have definitely been addressed, and I'm so grateful to both Vintage and Green Street. Green Street doesn't, isn't even involved, they're the ones who built it, but they're the ones who are applying with Vintage for these additional funds. But, go ahead.
Even Vintage says they will terminate them. Vintage is the owner.
No, I understand. So they've made some good progress, and there's a lot more to be done, and I'm sure we'll discuss it under the agenda.
All right. Thank you so much.
Can I be notified? Because I don't, if you give them the 60-day, I won't turn in the 14-day on Friday, but if I don't here, I'm going to turn all 27 14-days into the city.
Okay.
We have no choice.
Yeah.
We have no choice.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Terry Brooks, followed by Connie Silveira, followed by Michael Van Eaton.
It's me, Terry Brooks, again, and today I'm sharing my presentation about how people look when it comes to acts of discrimination. I've really learned a lot by reading a lot of books. I've learned that you cannot judge a book by its cover, and you cannot judge people by their looks. If anyone was ever discriminated against because of the color of their eyes, I would really find that to be quite a big surprise. Some people are actually discriminated against because of the color of their hair. Discriminating against elderly people with gray hair is quite unfair. Many people have been discriminated against because of the color of their skin. That has happened for way too long, again and again and again. There are some discriminators who discriminate against other people, who discriminate against other people because of their weight. And some people are discriminated against because of their height. That's another offense that just is not right. Some discriminators criticize people because of their facial features by comparing them to other species of creatures. Or they criticize others because of the length of their hair. That's another case of discrimination that is not fair. I've even heard some people criticize others for the size of their hand. That's another discrimination that really needs to be banned. Some discriminate against others because of piercings of their skin. Discriminators need to learn a little self-discipline. People who discriminate seem to always feel free in criticizing others about anything they see. They need to look in the mirror, and if they're okay with what they see, then they need to be okay with everything else that they see. I would like to thank you all for listening to me and for being okay, I hope, with what all of you see in me.
Good job, Terry. Where are we at?
Oh, we're at Chapter 40, and just so you know, I've only got six more chapters to go.
Thank you.
And then I've already started another book.
Were you a teacher at one time? You seemed like you would be a great teacher.
No, I was, for a long time, I was a librarian at the University of Missouri, in Columbia, Missouri, and I dealt with a lot of professors and students, and I kind of helped students, giving them a few tips on things.
I could see you'd be very good at that. Good job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Till next Wednesday, or the Wednesday after. We'll see you.
Connie Silveira, followed by Michael Van Eaton, followed by Randall Lawrence.
Hi, Connie.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Connie Silveira, and I'm just here to give you. An update. An update on our little neighborhood inner-city parks. And I realize that Wilkinson is slated to be redone in the next year or so, and we are really excited about that. But the playground equipment there is just so dangerous, and I know some of it's been boarded up, but it really is, if they could, like, put the playground part of the renovation at the beginning would be great, because there's really no place else close to there for the kids. But the one at Pickett Park, the large slide there is really bad, and that, you know, when you let these things go, then that's when the families don't come, and the homeless do come. And when I go over there all the time checking on the park, the homeless are increasing all the time. So it would be nice if, it's just one slide there. The rest of it doesn't look great, but it's fine. It's safe for kids, but that one slide is really bad. And so that's the one that I'm really here hoping you'll take notice of and really help. And, you know, and I noticed there's a lot of things on the agenda where, you know, out of the general fund, small quantities here and there, and maybe we could look elsewhere besides just the Parks Department for that. And I noticed, too, you have a Parks Consultant on Item D for $200,000. Maybe that could be the first thing on their list, you know? Find us one slide.
Yeah, aren't we sick of consultants?
Pardon?
I am. I'm sick of consultants, Jackie.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I am, too. I would much rather see, you know.
Jackie goes no.
Well, yes. And all of these are wonderful things that you're helping.
Some of them are very good and some needed, but to be honest with you.
Yes.
Governments love to do consultants.
Yeah, and I think we have the talent here. We don't need that. You know, we just need to.
Thank you.
Direct it in the right place, and these are all great things. I'm not criticizing the funding that you're doing. They're all wonderful things, but these parks are for the most vulnerable that we have, the kids, so please.
Right, and think about that, the parks, too, for children that are underserved in those areas, because you might have a lot of resources in your family, and, you know, your family can afford to go see plays or take you to Disneyland. Some children never get to do that. This is all they have. So thank you so much. Good job.
And when you look at some of the nicer parks, that we do have some gorgeous parks. I've been touring all of them, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Has Nathan been working with you?
We've been in touch.
Okay. All right. I'm going to reach out.
Michael Van Eaton, followed by Randall Lorenz, followed by David Chikar.
Well, hello.
Hey, how are you? Thank you so much for having me inviting me.
Are you guys nervous?
Not at all.
A little.
Just to start you off, these are a few friends of mine that I met, what, last week? We were in the park, and they were very gracious and kind, and I was really, I was, I got to tell you, I was just blown away by the level of use of the park at Barbara Bennett. And Jackie also tells me you guys go way back.
We do.
Good to see you.
Good to see you again, Ms. Bryant.
So, go ahead. Take it away.
Okay. So, we're speaking on a half, we're just a small percentage of all the people that play basketball at Barbara Bennett Park slash Wingfield Park. We're gonna, we're just coming up, we want to ask you guys if you could just redo the basketball courts. They're in disrepair, they're dilapidated. If you look, I have my phone here that went off, but, I mean, if you just want to look at some of the floors, it looks like the floors haven't been done for, I don't know, 30 years? I mean, it's just, people are slipping and sliding, it's very dangerous. And that park means a lot to a lot of people, specifically us. You know, especially with the revitalization going on, the River Walk, and how important that area is with all the festivals you guys put on year, month after month, week after week, especially in the summer. We would just like a basketball court that would be able to reflect that particular area. The mayor was nice enough to invite us down here last week, but she said we need four more votes. I'm not sure which one of you has to vote, but if any of you need foot rubs, or any of you go on a nice, good, nice coffee date or anything, we're here. We'd just like to request four new rims, breakaway rims, and the courts to be redone. And does anyone else want to say anything?
I mean, yeah, just to piggyback, it gets so much use. I'd say, like, six, seven hours, five days a week, so, sorry.
We've got a minute and a half.
Um, not, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but, yeah, it just gets a lot of use. And like you said before, some people don't get to go places, and it's like something to look forward to for a lot of people. Me, too.
Yeah.
Gets a lot of use, and it would be awesome if you guys could help us out.
I felt like I was in a big city. You guys had the music playing. It was just, it was such a cool vibe, and then you've got the mural down there. But I did, I did see a gentleman get hurt because of the-
Yeah, he's, he's slipping and sliding a lot down there, and it's such a important place for culture. You know, there's a lot of different minorities down there. It's like, if you want to see a melting pot in Reno, Barbara Bennett Park is the place.
I've been going there since 2016, and it's been like, five-day-a-week thing for me, on and off, for a long time. And I just look at it as a liability. I mean, a lot of children come there, I forgot the name of the school from right across the street, the River Walk.
St. Alde.
Uh, St. Thomas.
St. Thomas.
They come down there every Friday.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just, it's a beautiful park. It's like, literally, I think the number-one gemstone that all the parks in Reno, that Reno has.
Yeah.
So, and it would just, like, coincide with everything else that's been done there, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
The beautiful tree work, the landscaping, the beautiful mural, but then you have all this degrading asphalt, cracks, I mean, it's uneven, and it's just a huge liability for not only us, but also as well as children, or boys' children.
And I saw it on the city as well, because the park represents, you know, the beauty of the city, that you guys spent so much money revitalizing the River Walk, and it's really so beautiful. Why would the basketball courts or the parks be any different? They're right there, that really is the centerpiece for that area.
The tennis courts were terrible.
Yeah, I'm not a tennis player.
Well, we don't play tennis, so we'll-
So, right.
Or just do pickleball. Pickleball's scoring now, so.
I've represented that area for 12 years, and we have done the courts resurfacing, we got a new playground, but I understood that the basketball courts were going to be on hold because RTC is redoing the bridge. You're our RTC rep. When is that, when is that happening? So, that, that is true, but Jackie, you want to weigh in? I've got some good news for you.
Because I understood that they couldn't redo the basketball courts until after they did the bridge.
That, that's actually not in the plan. The bridge is going to be redone next April-ish, but we are slated to redo that basketball court in earlier spring of next year. So, as soon as we can get it bid, built, weather providing, it is definitely on the list. And so, thank you for your advocacy and your continued use of that facility. It's a wonderful gym for the downtown core.
And I will send you that memo, because I think a few of you reached out via email. Really appreciate it. The other thing is, you can tell by public comment how many people really value our parks and use them. I think especially now with the pandemic, too, people want to be outside. But one of the things that we're working towards is a, is a park district. And I would just say, when that comes before the council, it would be really great to get people to come out to support a parks district, because honestly, that's going to be the way that we continue to keep revitalizing our parks. So, the good news is, in early '25, so, just, what, what are we, we're in October? I always have to count down. November, December, yeah, right?
March-ish.
March. So, that's when. So, so we're excited. You'll get to see a new basketball court.
Make a note for four new rims as well, and that's like, there'd be so much-
The four, okay, we will. Lastly-
They're breaking, and they're-
Lastly, I've never had anyone offer to give any council members foot rubs. So, I'm really, so I'm really excited. I'm just kidding.
You're getting great foot rubs.
Wait, one more thing. You should introduce probably the king in the room, and that's Reno.
Yeah.
Oh, Reno.
Look at how good Reno is. Look at him, just sitting. Reno's like, is that me? Hi!
He'll be at the park. He's a, what do they call it?
I don't know what, is there-
The mascot of the park.
Is, he is the mascot of the park. And I don't know, are there different types of German Shepherds, or breeds of a different, of a German Shepherd? But he's absolutely beautiful.
King Shepherd. Alaskan Malamute, Pyrenees, and a German. They're very even-keeled, they're a lot bigger.
I can tell he's so mellow.
They do have double coats, so.
He's absolutely beautiful. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Thank you so much for having us.
And thank you, Reno.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Reno. Good seeing you.
Good to see you.
By the way, he worked at, where, where was it? The courthouse.
Well, I was working at the Second Judicial District Court with Ms. Bryant.
Yeah. You were at the courthouse for how long?
31 years since 1992.
31 years at the courthouse. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, back at you.
Randall Lorenz, followed by David Chikar, followed by Stephen White.
Good morning. My name is Randall Craig Lorenz. That's my legal name. My real name is Edwards Fenton. October 30th is Adoptee Remembrance Day, and it leads the way to November, which is Adoption Awareness Month. Adoption Remembrance Day emphasizes the voice of the adoptees, those who hold the least amount of power in the adoption triad. Their voices are drowned out and dismissed, and their trauma and grief and loss are ignored. Adoptee Remembrance Day is a day to remember the adoptees who have died, and also to acknowledge their experiences of all adoptees, and to raise awareness of the challenges that all adoptees face. It is an incorrect assumption held by many that all adoptees fare well and everything works out positively, when in fact, many adoptees are left alone and unsupported. Adoptee Remembrance Day was created by the Adoptees Connect. It commemorates and pauses for National Adoption Awareness Month, and focuses on adoptees' loss. It is a day to acknowledge those adoptees that have died by suicide, and they're 50 times, 55 times higher than the national average. And I'm one of those adoptees, and I have had to fight suicide for the last 72 years. And another thing that is really wrong that we need to get an understanding is because of the way the laws are written here in the United States and in Nevada, I am denied my original birth certificate, which gives my real name. And unless I go to court, I cannot find out anything about me. My medical history is gone, who my parents were were gone, my ethnicity is gone, everything is taken away. And adoptees in the United States lose almost all their rights. And it's time that we look at it. And the only reason why I found this out is because I went to the Healthy Nevada Project, and the results that came back were grossly wrong. It took me a year to realize my adoption was illegal. Everybody involved in it falsified, and that includes the guardian ad litem, and the judge deliberately ignored facts that that adoption should have never gone through. And I'm bringing this up to you now, so you can sit there and start considering, when things come up for adoption, look at them in a different way. Thank you.
So compelling, and also just, I don't think I ever thought about it in that capacity. And you're, you're so right. I, this is very important work. You've got to keep doing, keep doing this. I've had a lot of friends, and matter of fact, Tyler, over here, just adopted his son. And we've had a lot of people recently at the city of Reno, and a lot of our friends adopt children. And so, I'm so grateful that you brought this up, because I, I think there's a lot of complexities on so many different levels. So, I'm really, I'm, I'm really grateful you did that. Thank you.
If I could just say one thing. The child that has been adopted needs to know as early as possible, four or five years old, that they were adopted. And they need to have the support as they go through. All adoptees deal with grief, loss, guilt, shame, rejection, intimacy, and identity. And it doesn't have to be that way if we provide them the support they need. Thank you.
Good for you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
David Chikar, followed by Stephen White, followed by Brian Thornton.
Good morning, Mayor Shivi, and honored Reno City Council members. I am an independent fast-sketch portrait artist, and I'm here today to thank you for making art legal in the city of Reno. And rather than tell you, I thought that I would show you some samples of the work that I have done that has benefited my life because art is legal. I'm going to show you some samples of caricatures that I've done.
So cute.
This is a lead singer, I forget the name of her band, at Reno Public Market. This is a portrait of me done by awesome artist Gerald Atkins before I lost my vision in my eye. I work at Davidson's De Cellery, drawing biker babes sometimes. At the, at the Reno City Park, we had this thing called the Great Pumpkin Festival, that's one of the attendees. That's another one. This is Geneva from Nevada Fine Arts. This is a local poet named Crystal, one of my models. Another child model. I do female figurative studies, that was a book cover. This was a painting I did showing that people that resort to drugs and alcohol, a lot of times do so because they're not reading, they're not educating themselves on other ways to become better. Street vibrations, body caricature. This is a portrait at a dispensary. You would not believe some of the things people put in my tip jar at a dispensary. I go to Reno Public Market a lot. I love those folks. They let me draw there. This is one of the attendees. I like to draw in black and white. It's one of my favorite models, Tanya, black and white, ink and charcoal. Burning Man. If you haven't been there, you need to go to Burning Man. Another caricature of some families. I have this sign that says, "Free portraits for veterans and active-duty military personnel." But the first time I, I wrote the sign, I misspelled veterans, and it said, "Free portraits for veterinarians." So, if you're a veterinarian, or you're a veteran, we, we love you, and you get a free portrait because you're saving people and you're saving animals. This woman had 12 operations before she was 13 years old. This was sponsored by the medical students at UNR a couple of years ago. I do court sketches in federal court, because the judges have the discretion of whether or not to allow cameras, and since they don't have to allow a camera, they choose not to. But then that gives me employment, because I get to draw the pictures that people need to see. This is Sophia Rodriguez, winner of the Betty Page Look-Alike Contest.
All right.
Another courtroom scene.
Thank you.
This was James Biella, the murderer of Brianna Dennison, and to his right was the Reno Police Department sketch artist that helped lead to the arrest and conviction of him.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Well, I thank you.
And I have one in my office from you, which I love, love, love. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Stephen White, followed by Brian Thornton, followed by Michelle Hamilton.
Hello, Mayor. Good to see you again.
Hello. Good to see you. Good to be seen.
Yeah, good morning there, City Council. Let me start out by saying, I sure hope you'll pass Item B16 for veterans, and I hope you'll pass Jenny's B17, but I hope you'll double the amount of money for the kids. You know why? Because the city owes these, all artists in this city a debt, a debt for all the years that you had violating artists' rights. This is a lady by the name of Audrey. Audrey is an incredible artist, and she lives in a little town of Alice Springs, in the outback of Australia. The town people, the town government, wasn't letting Audrey sell her artwork along with her friends in the town square, just like Reno and Sparks used to do here, running people off. So, Audrey and her friends took the matter into the high courts there in Australia. And in their arguments before the court, they cited my ruling out of our Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal in defense of their right to be artists in the outback of Australia. So I have a question for all of you. For 10 years now, we've had codes passed that honor the rights of artists. Why is it that artists in the outback of Australia know about their constitutional right to sell their artwork on public property without a license, and yet artists in your own community don't know this? You've got a serious problem here, folks. You know, why aren't kids, why aren't you reaching out to all these kids up in the college up there? Why aren't you reaching out to your high school kids? You had a senior art show over at the art community back there, or at the art center back in May. Did anybody bother to tell any of those seniors, or invite any of those seniors to come down and share their artwork with the community along the River Walk or in the public parks? And if not, why not? Why is the city art council doing absolutely nothing to encourage community participation in the arts? We're talking about revitalizing your whole downtown area here. You know, I worked with the mayor of Rocky Anderson, mayor of Salt Lake City, prior to the Olympics. They had a real problem, their whole downtown area was decaying, and the stores were closed and all. They hired a firm to come in and do an analysis, and ask them what they could do to revitalize Salt Lake City for the coming Olympics. You know what they told them? Bring the artists in. Bring artists downtown. Get artists down in your downtown area, and they'll revitalize your downtown area. And that's what they did, and it turned out to be wonderful. The whole downtown area was great for the Olympics. I'm asking you folks to do the same thing. You realize it cost the city nothing. You have 280,000 people living in the city. You can surely muster up a couple of thousand artists, can't you? You know? It's real frustrating. And by the way, here's some photographs of artists that are along the River Walk over that are along the Riverwalk over the years. These artists are there. I mean, you love seeing David out there, right? Here David out there along the Riverwalk. Here John Manley playing music for people. Don't you want to see that along your Riverwalk? Mayor, you and I'd want to see it, don't we?
Yes, absolutely.
You know, let's start working towards that, people.
You tell every artist, every artist, I want them.
God bless y'all. And by the way, God bless all those folks who are getting hit by those hurricanes down there in the southeast.
You are exactly right.
Did you get your bunny picture?
Um, I didn't, I don't think so. Oh, does she have it?
Funny bunny. And did you read your book?
I'm, I'm on it. I'm on it. I'm on it. But you'll, you'll be excited to know that we're going to turn what I call Virginia Square into an arts district.
That's a good book to know about, you know, the art therapy.
Arts therapy. It's excellent.
Thanks, folks. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. White. Thank you, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Brian Thornton, followed by Michelle Hamilton, followed by Robin Palmer.
Good morning. I'm Brian Thornton, a Reno resident and a former mechanical engineer, now working on energy and climate policy with Citizens Climate Lobby. Thank you, Mayor, Reno City Council, and staff for the 2019 Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, which made a strong start. The 2025 update can address both air pollution, a major issue in Reno, and climate change by focusing on buildings. Buildings are the second largest cause of particulate and smog air pollution. Residential and commercial building energy usage is responsible for over 60% of Reno's climate pollution. A major part of this pollution is from heating buildings and producing hot water with natural gas. Buildings last for many decades. Changes are needed now to reach long-term sustainability and climate goals. For the 2025 update, Reno should strengthen its goals for reducing air and climate pollution and set specific targets and implementation steps for its own buildings and for new and existing buildings in the community. For its own buildings, the city should develop a plan to eliminate natural gas for heating buildings and providing hot water. Operations and maintenance should develop and implement this plan. For example, the plan could include replacement of gas water heaters at the end of their useful life with heat pump water heaters. When considering building upgrades such as energy efficiency, elimination of natural gas, not just more efficient equipment, should be given priority. Procurement criteria should include air and climate pollution outcomes in addition to first costs and operating costs. For the community, the city should move towards ordinances such as for zoning and planning that incentivize and eventually require all electric buildings. The city should provide training to the building community on how the elimination of the need for natural gas infrastructure can significantly reduce the costs for new buildings, helping with the issue of affordable housing. They should also educate the public about the new types of equipment, such as heat pumps and heat pump water heaters, and the benefits in cleaner air. The city should adopt new energy codes every three years instead of six years and consider optional appendices and stretch code provisions. The code develops in incremental steps, and a six-year cycle misses those increments, making it a bigger leap to implement the next round of changes. While there are sometimes costs implementing energy code changes, they often reduce the cost of operating buildings. Even more important, the changes are justified by more rapidly reducing air and climate pollution, which harm and even kill people, particularly children, low income, and the elderly. Thank you for your consideration as you update the Reno Sustainability and Climate Action Plan.
Good job. Do you, have you met with Suzanne yet?
Yes, we're in communication.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure, because she's so passionate about, she's doing a tremendous job. And it's really important to continue to advocate, especially, you know, things are changing. We're seeing more fires, more, you know, catastrophic disasters. So thank you. It's really important. But also for our buildings, the efficiency, but just for the climate in general. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Michelle Hamilton, followed by Robin Palmer, followed by Gabrielle Guerrero via Zoom.
Good morning, Council members and Mayor Sheevy. My name is Michelle Hamilton, and I've lived in Reno since 2017. I love living here for many reasons. People are friendly. There are a ton of things to do in downtown. We've heard a lot about them today, from sports to gaming to arts to pickup games at the parks to music in restaurants. And when I want to get away from people, I just go out into the desert, or I go into the Sierras. And the place that we all live in sustains us in more ways than I can count. So I am really proud to live in a city where local government, that's all of you, has recognized that the world is changing, as you just said, Mayor Sheevy, and has committed to the carbon pollution reduction goals defined in the Paris Agreement. So I'm here today because I understand that work is being done to update the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan that was unanimously approved by the City Council in 2019. The updated plan will outline specific actions the city plans to take between 2025 and 2030. Now, since the plan was adopted back in 2019, scientists have confirmed and deepened our understanding of the carbon pollution that is overheating the planet and making droughts and wildfires worse, as you say. The Davis Wildfire is our most recent example. We see what's happening in Florida. Now, we don't have hurricanes in Nevada, but it is getting hotter. We had record-breaking temperatures in June and July. Living without air conditioning on some days seems unthinkable. Yet, when we moved here in 2017, our neighbors who'd been here for decades said, ah, you don't need air conditioning. You just open up your windows in the evening and let the cool Nevada wind blow away the heat. But between the wildfire smoke and warm evenings, that just doesn't work anymore. So the good news is, is that we already have the tools and technologies we need to reduce carbon pollution and mitigate the harm climate change is causing. We just need the motivation and the will to actually use those tools. So I'm here to urge the City Council to step up its ambition in the updated plan, strengthen the goals, ramp up the actions, enlarge the city's capacity to implement the plan by increasing staffing and budget. We think that, I personally think that Suzanne and Jesse Joe are doing an amazing job. But as you know, this is not something that should be isolated in a specific team. We need to ensure that every department within city government takes the impact of climate change into account when making decisions and spending taxpayer money. This is a priority. We must protect this place we all love. Later is too late.
Good job. And look at you, literally right on time, like perfect. Nice. Thank you so much. Well said.
Robin Palmer, followed by Gabrielle Guerrero via Zoom.
Good morning, Mayor Sheevy, Council members, staff, and we have a few attendees left. I'm Robin Palmer. I'm a climate advocate, and I'm also an avid bicyclist. 10 miles to get here this morning.
Wow. Good for you.
And it's really a beautiful morning for a bike ride. I could be better prepared, so I hope this goes smoothly. I'm here to support B-19, the resolution donating council discretionary funds to the Reno Bike Project to support its mission of advocating for a sustainable cycling community through education, collaboration, and accessibility in the amount of $1,000. Council member Brekis, thank you for bringing this resolution forward. Transportation is the leading contributor to greenhouse gas emissions that are warming our planet, as evidenced, as Michelle just spoke, about the warming in our, our own city. I believe bicycles are the greatest invention of all time. We have a solution for making a dent in our greenhouse gas emissions. Reno Bike Project is built around the belief that the bicycle is the world's greatest and most utilized mode of transportation, maybe not here locally, but globally, and that every individual, regardless of age, gender, race, or class, has a right to afford, maintain, and enjoy one. Reno Bike Project coordinates the youth major tailor summer camps designed to teach youth 13 to 17 years old the basics of cycling and road safety so that they can experience the joys and convenience of biking for the rest of their lives. Reno Bike Project also has a project called Free Wheels for Kids. This is a holiday project to provide bicycles for free to low-income children for Christmas. The majority of you, including the audience, I'm sure, have ridden a bicycle in the past, and you probably know the adage, you never forget how to ride a bicycle. Reno Bike Project's motto is more butts on bikes more often. I especially want to give a shout out to Lindsay Lansdale, who coordinates or volunteers her time for the femme trans women non-binary wrenchin workshop. Under her tutelage, I have replaced my gear shifters, replaced my cassette, replaced my brake cable, and have numerous times cleaned and moved my various bicycles. I'm also glad to see that Reno, or the Regional Transportation Commission's huge investment, 20 million, I believe, to make bicycling safer in our city. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
That's amazing. You bike 10 miles to get here today. And then you're going to bike 10 back.
Yeah, I always figure, if I get there, that's, you know, what choice do I have?
Amazing.
Riding back.
Well, if you wait till after the meeting, I'm happy to take you home. But thank you so much. Great, great, great comments. Fantastic.
Our final public commenter is Gabrielle Guerrero via Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. We can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Gabrielle Guerrero. I'm a volunteer with the Citizens Climate Lobby, and I'm very passionate about the city of Reno, the community, and the massive opportunity that you all have to set the stage for the future growth of the city. So Reno can be as beautiful and enjoyable as its surroundings. So thank you so much to all of you, and especially to Suzanne for your work on the 2019 Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. The plan of the last five years was a great start, and it's exciting to see Reno taking steps to combat climate change. However, much more needs to be done in the updated plan. I personally would like to see more drastic action taken to combat climate change. Some examples of things that the city could do include pushing for smart city planning, like building vertically, making the city more walkable and bikable, adding more pedestrian squares, and electrifying everything, including adding more EV charging stations, making new and old buildings 100% electric, and pushing utilities to move to clean energy.
Was she cut off, or is she finished?
Thank you. Yep. No, that was it.
Oh, good. Okay. Great comments. Couldn't agree more.
Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional live public comment. For the record, I'd like to state that we received 13 comments, which were general in nature, not directly associated with an agenda item, prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, October 8. These comments were voicemail and/or written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form or by email to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on Reno.gov/meetings. Five letters in favor and eight letters of concern. And with that, we have no additional public comment.
Okay. Thank you so much. Then I believe we're going to head into item A4, correct?
That is correct.
All right. At this time, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda, and then I'm going to send it over to our city manager, Jackie Bryant. May I get an approval?
Did you have to make a change first?
Oh, before we do that? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will hear item D1, the August Downtown Update, as a time certain of 1:00 PM. We will also have an attorney-client meeting at noon today.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor? Yeah. I was also requesting if we could move item D4 up on the agenda. That's the ARPA reallocation. I just would like to be here during that discussion. Thank you. Okay, sounds good.
I'll move to approve as identified.
I was asking to move up D4, which is the ARPA, to the beginning of the D items or whenever you.
You said that.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Do you need, do you need, no?
I just missed what she said.
Okay. All right. So.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. At this time, item A5, approval of the minutes. May I get a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We're going to head into item B. Madam Clerk?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to ask Council members if they have any items they would like to pull off the agenda and for discussion. Okay, I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Brekis. Go ahead.
I don't have any.
All right. Councilwoman Martinez. Councilwoman Taylor. Councilwoman Reese.
No, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Doerr.
Just B4 and B14.
Okay. B4 and B14, and Councilwoman Ebert.
None for me.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve all remaining items.
Second. Motion to approve. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Madam Clerk, we're going to start with item B4. Do you have any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any consent agenda comments.
Okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to pull this off. It's for $3.5 million. It's a, it's a big new project out at the Reno Sted. And I, I just think it's always good for our residents to know about our biggest projects, so. And, and I'm in favor of it. So if we could just get a brief statement about what it's about. Let me just say this, too. I didn't realize that we had to build a new maintenance building. So I knew we were rebuilding a lot of the treatment cells and processes and all that out there, but.
Yeah. Good morning. Thank you. So, good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Joe Coudry, a senior civil engineer with Utility Services. So here's just a brief presentation, a quick overview of the project. So this item is really, it's two items, but it's primarily about the construction of the administration and maintenance building. So it's an expansion to the administration building and the construction of a new maintenance building. And the associated items for construction management for the construction project. So this aligns with our strategic plan in the area of infrastructure, climate change, and environmental sustainability. And this is the project. The vicinity map is showing it to be at the Reno Sted Water Reclamation Facility. And if you see the red star, that's where it's sited within the facility itself. Whoops. And this is kind of the meat of the project. So if you look, is there a pointer here? If you look at the, is there a pointer in this? No. Oh, mouse pad, yeah. If you look at the, the existing admin building, it's, it's this square right here. That building's been in service since, wow, since 1989. The plant has doubled in capacities. It's doubled plus in capacity. We also have the Advanced Purified Water Facility project coming online ostensibly. So that will put some more demands on the facility. We have additional, besides the treatment capacity itself, we have additional maintenance, or sorry, operators at, at the facility. There's a lot of reasons for an needed upgrade. So the upgrade will be here. And then the maintenance and operations building is planned for here. That'll allow us to do certain maintenance things that are a little larger. It also will allow us to have some indoor storage for, we've got a welding trailer, a pump trailer, some vehicles. And it'll just expand our capacity for storage, which right now that we actually maintain some things outside in Conex storage units. They're just like the metal storage shipping containers that you see on backs of trucks and on cargo, shipping cargo containers. This will be an upgrade. We'll be able to store a lot of equipment inside the building. So that's, that's a quick overview.
Okay. I just have a question. When we approve the installation of the one, the APWA Advanced Treated Water project, we also talked about the need for a visitor center or exhibit, something on site. Is that part of this?
No, that, that's not part of this. That, there will be, as proposed, as part of that Advanced Purified Water Facility, a public engagement center and a conference room. I did allude to the fact that that project will also present more needs for Reno. So as part of this admin building expansion, there's going to be a conference room. It'll at least allow us to have meetings. It's not big, but right now, we're pressed to even have meetings in that building.
Okay. Well, it's good that you can have meetings out there, because I know a lot of people come and visit, including us, staff, council members, other people that want to see what's going on. And it's good to have a central meeting place. Well, where, can you go back to the other site plan?
Yeah.
Where will this new public engagement center be on this site?
So the, the. So the public engagement center is really going to be across the street. I don't have anything prepared, but across the street will be, you know, it's really on the other side of Leaver Boulevard, so it's at the intersection where the APWF is proposed.
So it won't be onsite at the wastewater treatment plant? It'll be across the street on other property Reno owns?
You could walk across the street, take, you know, drive across the street. There's an access gate.
Okay. Is that because there just isn't enough room, or is it a security thing?
Well, the whole APWF itself is really separate. It's connected via all the utility work, but it's a separate site. So in that sense, we didn't, I see the question, what, could we have done on the other side of the street? There's a lot of benefit of having it there, because then, at the same time that you're engaging the public, they can see the facilities.
It's on the other side of the street from this?
It's all co-located with the APWF project.
Okay, and that's across the street. All right. Well, I think it's fantastic that we're going to have that public engagement center. This technology is so new. So few people understand. There's only a few of us that had a chance on Western Regional Water Commission to go tour other facilities. A number of them had an engagement center, a public engagement center. I think it's a critical part, so thank you. I was confused when I saw this item. I saw administration. I saw, you know, meeting space. I wasn't sure if this was it.
Thanks for the question.
All right. Thank you. And I don't know if anyone else has questions?
Yeah, I do. I do. I just, you know, a couple comments is, you know, I appreciate it getting pulled, because since I prepared for the meeting, read that, a memo came from staff that the One Water is, got a new cost estimate on that. What is it up to now? 350?
Yeah. It's a total project cost. That's not just construction. It's a total project cost approximately.
And this isn't in that?
This is not part of that.
Okay, so this is a $4 million item on top of an increasing and escalating project at 350. Obviously, we're a 70/30 split, right, with Tamoa on that? So one would presume that if staff is coming forward with these costs and these outlays, that they're comfortable in their modeling of the sewer rates, you know, presumably the blend between the rates and the connection fees, that the One Water is going to be able to occur with, you know, the existing rate structure. I haven't seen modeling on the costs that keep escalating and the rate structure, and then, you know, don't forget, we've got other plan obligations in probably five years. And so I would just suggest to the council that you task staff to show you a 10-year modeling on this, you know, large aspect of the budget, because I guess Finance Director Van Buren, we all know that we go cost of living on our sewer rates, and they're going up this month by how much? You don't know, do you?
No, but thank you, Councilwoman Breckus. That modeling is currently in process, and we should have the results by January.
Well, that modeling was in existence five years ago, and someone, you know, if it hasn't been, you know, in process or constantly updating, you know, I'm really, I'm skeptical that this is going to be able to be done without rate increases, and this is a rate that gets going's cost of living every October. It's probably, is it, the largest jump was 8%? Is it 5%, 6%? Ms. Van Buren, what are, I always like to know what sewer rates are jumping. Do you know what they're jumping? If you don't have it, that's okay. One would presume, you know, I can calculate it on my sewer bill that I'll be getting. Do you know what they jumped this?
Can I have a point of order? Can I?
No, you may not. May I ask a question?
Point of order. Mr. Attorney, is this a topic that we're supposed to be discussing under the open meeting law? It seems far afield from the topic that was, this was agendized for.
Yeah, it's starting to get far afield, and I think the question was answered. If we could just get back to.
Yeah, $4 million, a $4 million item on top of a $350 million. What is the growth in the fund to pay for all this?
Vicky Van Buren, Director of Finance, I don't have that information with me down here today. I think it's around 2.8, but I am not positive.
We only jumped up 2.8. Okay, okay. Yeah. And, you know, I just, it's really important to understand what's going on with this budget area, because you are going to have some enormous outlays coming. Now, I think they've been sitting on money because the spend-down hasn't come, but at the same time, the spend-down hasn't come on the One Water, the project keeps growing.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Any further questions? Seeing that there are none, Councilwoman Doer, please give me a motion.
Yeah, a motion to appro, oh, we have more questions?
Yeah.
All right. Councilwoman Ebert.
Yeah, just real quick. So this is just a building. This won't affect any kind of treatment or anything regarding, you know, the output of this facility at all?
That's right. There's no treatment involved with this at all.
Okay, okay. Has there been, you know, leading up to this, any kind of shift in the production of effluent or treatment, or any kind of flow shave, or anything at this location to accommodate this new construction?
Meaning, is this construction tied to more effluent leaving the facility?
Yeah, or just kind of like shifting things around in preparation for construction? Has that impacted any kind of current functionality there?
Is the question about construction of the maintenance and admin building or other kind?
Just any of this, any of this construction?
The only thing that's happened out there is we do have a salt sand area that has been utilized by our street crews in the past, so that's being relocated to another area within the RISWORF, you know, facility to prepare for the construction for this maintenance building, so that's the only thing that's coming to mind.
Okay, so nothing regarding input or output of this facility has been modified to make room for this new construction?
No, that's right. Nothing's been modified to make room for this.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Doer, please give me a motion.
Sure. I'd like to move to approve item B4 on the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say.
Madam Mayor, I'm not going to support this. I recognize I did vote for B5, but I just want to say, this is $4 million outlay for a building to support a function that we haven't seen any cost modeling, that it can be done and accomplished without raising rates, okay? You should absolutely be in the position to say, you know, the rate structure it is will get us there, or in year four, year five coming out, to do One Water, we're going to have to raise rates. And I just, I also want to say, other sides of the economy, in terms of a lot of the projections for the warehouses that have been overbuilt or sitting vacant and not paying rate structures are starting to come to light. So I'm concerned about this area of the budget and what lays in the future in terms of rates that you're all going to have to deal with. So I'm a no. Thank you.
I have another question, too, real quick. I know we already opened a motion. Are we doing like the C-MAR process on this to kind of like make sure we keep the costs in a certain range, or?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah.
No, this is hard bid. We bid it, just a hard bid.
Okay. So we don't really have any assurance that this is going to stay at this rate? There could be, you know, unforeseen events that cause the cost to increase?
So, I mean, we have the bids. If council decides to award, we do have some contingency, but that would be what would address any unforeseen's in the contract, but right now, we do have the bid and the bid bond, so that should be able to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Over. We made a motion, I think Mr. Reese seconded.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay.
B14?
Yep. On B14 is 3.3 million for Reno Fire Department to purchase equipment, and I didn't know if anyone is here. Again, this is a very high dollar. I didn't pick the one and a half million item, but I did pick these that are over $3 million. My question here is, I know some time ago, City of Reno fire staff came and proposed removing conditions on the Santera project and purchasing and using, I think they were going to take 200,000 or 300,000 and purchase a fire apparatus for Station 12. And I was wondering if this purchase here includes the apparatus that, I think it was a medical response unit, is what I recall. Is that included here now?
Good morning. Pete Bryant, Division Chief, Support Services for Reno Fire Department. That's not part of this. That's a separate.
So can you tell us just a little bit about this one?
Yes. So what this item, we have one ladder truck on the agenda there. We have one squad apparatus, which is the smaller adjunct to the ladder truck. We have one air truck, which is the truck that's used to refill our air bottles on emergency incidents, structural fires and such. And then we have one ambulance on here. The ambulance is a replacement ambulance for one that we have, the current one that it's replacing is a 2,000, it has 178,000 miles, it's end of life, so this is a replacement for that, not an additional.
I think I didn't understand that, because the equipment being, and what does that cost? Is that like the 200 or 300,000?
The ambulance, it's about 200, 300,000.
Yeah. And that's what, that's what made me confused. I wasn't sure if it was the one that you were going to buy in lieu of the Santera, or if it was a replacement.
Right, yeah, this is, this is replacement.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all the questions I have.
Okay, wait.
Mr. Bryant, will you state your name and title for the record, please?
Yes. Pete Bryant, B.R.I.A.N.T., Division Chief, Support Services.
So this is for an ambulance, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I also received a letter from REMZA stating that you have to notify them per the franchise agreement. Did that happen?
I'm not sure if that happened or not. This is something that's been.
They seem to say that it didn't. Can, because here's why, here's why this bothers me, because we have a really good relationship with them, and it makes it probably a little bit more difficult for our partners to trust what we're doing. And so maybe you can talk a little bit about that. I would also like to know, how many transports are we doing in a month?
Okay.
Good morning. John McNamara, Operations Chief for Reno Fire Department. I can help you with those questions. So the letter, I saw the letter. The ambulance we are purchasing, like I said, is replacing one. We're not adding any additional ambulances to the stations. We meet with REMZA on a monthly basis. We talk to them at different meetings. We told them that we were doing this.
Did you put it in writing? I think it said it had to be in writing up to like 180 days or something like that, according to the memo?
I'm not, we did not put it in writing, only because, like I said, this is replacement. This is, we're getting rid of a 174, 178,000 mile ambulance and replacing it. Our staffed ambulances are at Station 2, Station 3, Station 6 is partly staffed, and then Station 9. We're not changing anything. We're not infringing on, we're not changing or expanding our coverage whatsoever.
So what, what happens to the old ambulance?
So that is going to go probably to auction, or I'm not sure, donate or auction, or, or just for training. But it's going to be off the streets. It's, like I said, we got it for free when we first got an ambulance service, and it served our purposes, but it's well beyond. I don't want my personnel riding on it, in it, and definitely don't want our citizens or visitors to, for us to transport.
Well, there's a great organization that works with, they're first, they were, they're retired first responders. They were just here. I can't remember. What's their name?
Oh, the peer support.
Network.
Yeah.
Net.
What is it? Peer Support Network.
Yeah.
Network. They would probably be a great organization.
Unfortunately, the ambulance has so many miles. We will definitely talk to them, make sure before we do something with it.
Well, when it's free, they probably would be very grateful, right?
As for transports, in the last 30 days, we have provided 27 mutual aid transports for REMZA.
27?
In the last, in the last 30 days. That is correct.
And so how does that work? Do you, how do you decide?
So we decide when REMZA, either they are out of ambulances, or just due to call volume or staffing, they contact us and request a mutual aid transport. So Medic 2 or Medic 3, so they're staffed 24/7, and based on location, those paramedics respond in lieu of a REMZA ambulance.
So how many ambulances do we have?
So two full-time staffed. Medic 6 depends on the staffing, and actually, up in Station 9, which is Sted, due to the construction delays on the freeway and the call volume, we staff that ambulance with suppression personnel. We didn't have the capability to put four more people at Station 9 to add a second engine, but we did have the capability to add one more bedroom. So we have a four-person engine company and then a two-person rescue that we staff with suppression personnel, so they can respond to medicals, they can provide mutual aid transports for REMZA, and they can also do fire suppression activities going to a structured fire.
27 is not a lot of transports.
For mutual aid transports, yes. That is actually, that's just in the last 30 days. That actually is a pretty significant number comparing where we were just maybe last year.
Uh huh. Okay. And then I thought that GMET funding would somehow pay for this?
So GEMT finding, so Ms. Van Buren can correct me if I'm wrong, but so we, the GEMT formula, we get reimbursed for certain transports, and then that money goes back into our budget, which helps us fund the paramedic program and the ambulance purchases. So.
And, Vicky, let me ask you, how much GMET funding have we received?
Vicky Van Buren, Director of Finance, we've received $7.3 million to date, and the cost of the actual program has been 2.4 million, and that includes ambulances and personnel.
So I don't understand, why does it come out of the general fund?
The funding goes, comes back as a reimbursement to the general fund, and we're actually transferring those funds over to their capital maintenance fund, and they're going to use that for their capital program going forward.
Listen, you know I'm very supportive of my fire department. However, that, the memo that I got, can you please make sure that you communicate those things with them? Because it puts us in a, in a tough position with them, and it makes it look like we're not being good partners.
I was very surprised with that memo. I talk to their operations chief almost on a weekly basis. We talk all the time.
Well, remember, and I think it says you have to have it in writing so many days in advance.
So yeah.
So just because we talk to people, you should get that, get, follow whatever the agreements are, so that we don't.
We will definitely follow up to make sure that.
That we keep our partnership strong.
Absolutely.
Whether, I don't care who it is, but it just helps us say we're following the guidelines. So, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions? Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I just, you know, here's my observation on this, and I didn't support the paramedic program, because I just didn't think it was very well cooked out, you know, and I wanted to see the reporting, not at a point of contract authorization, but, you know, how many you are transporting, are the funds coming, how it works? Because I understand that you're only transporting people who have, is it Medicare patients?
That is, that is 100% incorrect. We transport people who need, need emergency medical service, and then that is all figured out on the back end in terms of billing.
Yeah.
We've never asked anyone if they're insured, if they have Medicare or Medicaid-
Okay.
Or anything like that. We respond to anyone who needs help.
Well, you know, I have asked, is, you know, how are you billing? Because Reno residents aren't accustomed to getting bills from the city of Reno for, you know, general public safety. And so, I've been wanting a lot of that data, and it just has really escaped. But then, on the other hand, anytime we're trying to do something here, REMSA shows up with some letter, and their lobbyist talking to us, trying to, you know, exert some rights that presumably that they have, but the way I see it is they're a franchisee with a clock running on their services to be providing to this community, and maybe the policy body here should be starting to talk about that day, and merging that with, you know, this new service level you've been doing. That's the conversation that should be happening here, not on a consent item. And it just doesn't happen, and then what's happening is a lobbyist, or a contractor lobbyist has been hired to help the city get a bill to re, regionalize fire. So, let's have conversations, and I'm gonna be gone, on the big issues, rather than these sniping things, or unknown data that our own organization is not reporting to this body, really. So.
And, um, you know, I think part of it, too, is really about the communication. I mean, that's a big part of it, um, because we, we've really worked hard to build those relationships with all of our partners. So, I think it's just one of those pieces where the communication is so important, because that's always been sort of the big issue, is one hand is not talking to the other. And so, we don't wanna continue to go down that path, because I think it makes your job harder and everyone else's, so.
Agreed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Buren.
I think Councilwoman Reese.
Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you for the excellent, uh, presentation and the materials provided. Um, I think I wanna make sure I separate out two concerns I have. Number one is, I absolutely believe that, uh, we should vote yes on the item. It is important that we provide, uh, our men and women in the Reno Fire Department with the equipment that they need to perform their jobs, and also that they get home safe to their families. So, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor. Um, I'm also in favor of the program that has been stood up as the single role paramedic. I think it's now been proven out over the last several months how valuable it is, not only that it, um, saves lives, because there are certainly these, um, opportunities where, um, REMSA and you, through the mutual aid agreements, have decided when to send a, a single role paramedic, and I think that's important, because it allows REMSA to do the work that they're doing in certain areas. It allows us to do it. It also saves the wear and tear on our vehicles.
Absolutely.
And so, the, the program, I think, is, is quite frankly wildly successful. If you listen to Ms. Van Buren's, uh, point about the seven point three million received versus the two point four spent, it's doing very well. It, it is absolutely important. Um, those are things that I think, of course, will go into our fire capital fund for fiscal year twenty-five, which allows us then to continue on the apparatus replacement schedule that we have. I'll also say, because I am the incoming Chair of the District Board of Health, or Northern Nevada Public Health, that we do have an excellent relationship with REMSA, uh, region-wide. Um, I think, you know, I'm less concerned about the technical violation of some obscure line in an agreement that we have not looked at in twenty years, meaning, it, it does not matter to me that that didn't happen, although it matters for the relationship. So, let's go back to those agreements, make sure we've read through them, understand what our obligations are, so that no one is caused to send, uh, a nasty email that says, hey, you didn't tell us about it. I do think that REMSA and Reno Fire and our own city meet very often collaboratively. I know that Chief Cochrane, Mr. Who Plantis, and Mr. Hodge are meeting frequently on these topics, and, and perhaps you're included in those things, too. So, um, you know, Reno Fire Department transporting only within the system that we've created, and when asked to, or when overloads happen or ambulance occurs, I think is a natural thing to do. And so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm excited. I think there are lots of things going on in this area specifically. I know the last, um, Joint Administration Committee meeting, this discussion about the ambulance was also present there. So, again, no one can be, said that they did not know it was happening. Um, I, I just think it's good to have open lines of communication, and, and try our very best to follow the elements of the minutia of various agreements to its logical conclusion. Uh, but, uh, important work that we're doing, and, and absolutely supportive of the purchases.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, I just had two follow-up questions. One is that, I wanted to make sure, you said that we did twenty-seven, um, uses of the ambulance and mutual aid last month, I think it was, or, okay.
In the last thirty days.
So, that would round out to about three hundred a year, you know, on average, perhaps, or a little more. Um, my question is, are there other uses of the ambulance? In other words, is it only used in response to the mutual aid request, or do you also dispatch it directly?
Yeah, so, i, in addition to the mutual aid requests, it also responds to calls that it doesn't necessarily end up transporting on. So, there are the mutual aid requests that are a partnership with REMSA, uh, where they've asked for help, and we send the ambulance to help transport that patient. Separately from that, we respond at first out in some of these areas, because as part of the single role paramedic program, we send those ambulances to reduce wear and tear on the fire apparatus-
Right.
And to reduce the call volume for the rest of the department, too. So, it is used for other stuff, absolutely.
So, do you have any sense of those numbers, or?
Uh, I don't have specifics on how many calls they're running. I can tell you-
I mean, do you think it's roughly equal, or it's a lot less?
For example, um, from Station Three, which is, uh, on Moana there, the ambulance there runs between ten and fourteen calls a day.
A day?
Yes. And the engine runs about the same. So, prior to the advent of the single role program, the engine ran over twenty-
All those calls.
And then, when we got the ambulances, they've helped absorb, uh, spread the load.
Well, I think it's really important to note that, because that would equal out to, like, three hundred calls a day. You, you said ten a day, I mean, three hundred a month.
Yes.
Separate and apart from the three hundred a year that are done for mutual aid. And I think that's a better answer to the mayor's question about how often the ambulance is used. So, three hundred times a month, in addition to three hundred times a year for mutual aid. So, it's our, it's being used three hundred times a month.
Yes.
So, that, I mean, that's over, you know, just quickly, over three, sorry, over three thousand times a year, in addition to the three hundred just for mutual aid.
Well, and, and that's just the one at Station Three. So, like, uh, Chief McNamara said, we also have the one at Station Two. We have one situationally at Station Six, and now at Nine. So, those are also running calls.
So, there's four altogether?
So, there's currently four. Two all the time, and then two situationally, depending on the staffing that day.
Okay, well, that helps explain the reimbursement funds, too. I, I mean, how come they're so big? Um, I, so, basically, if, if, what I'm hearing, that's twelve thousand times a month, potentially, that the ambulance, if, if each of the four stations is doing three thousand calls a month.
Yeah, the, the Station Three ones are considerably higher. That's why I use that as an example, because-
Okay.
Because that's where it's more apples to apples, because Station Three's very busy-
Okay.
And the engine and the ambulance are about on par.
All right.
Station Six, it's, it's, it's a more of a disparity. It's a lot more engine firing of calls than medicals.
Well, bottom line, it's a lot more than three hundred times that it's used for mutual aid in a year. It's thousands of times. It's used thousands and thousands of times that it's used just for direct response.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think it's important to clarify that, because when you answered the question, it sort of gave an impression that it wasn't used very often.
Right, and I apologize for that. I was more directing it to the mutual aid and the questions that were posed by our partners.
I understand.
And that's, those are the ones that they're more concerned about, because it's the ones that help with the overall transporting of the patient.
Transport, right.
But the response, yes, they are responding thousands of times.
Well, I mean, we know that, I, we've heard eighty percent of the responses for medical issues from our fire department.
Yes.
So, okay, all right, well, Madam Mayor, do you want me to make a motion, or? Any further questions, Councilwoman Neber? No, okay, all right. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Wait, we haven't taken a motion?
I don't think we've-
Sorry, sorry.
No, I was just asking- I, no, because I was thinking, because part of it, um, you know, I just wonder, I guess part of it, too, is like, I also think the money, in some ways, like, we need bodies, too, right? So, I think we have to be really careful. And so, part of me says, well, I mean, can REMSA do some of that? Because like, I start to think about these fires that are happening. So, all of a sudden, again, you know, we're in a situation where we need you guys to fight fires as well, right?
Absolutely.
So, I think you have to be careful of that balance. Um, and so, then it would make me cause for concern of like, okay, what does that look like as we grow? So, are we, you know, biting off more than we can chew, those kinds of things? Does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense, and that's part of the success of the single role paramedic program, is that prior to having the ambulances and the single role paramedics, it was all firefighters going to all these calls. So, with the paramedics and the ambulances, they can go to the medical calls to free us up to be able to go to fires. So, we send them to fires, but we also release them quickly if there's not a medical component, and they're still available to continue running the medical calls for the city, in addition to being able, available to help with REMSA upon request for the mutual aid transports. So, you're, you're exactly, exactly right.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, good, thank you. All right.
So, do you want a motion?
Yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve item fourteen.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Um, I think we're gonna head over, Jackie, our City Manager, I think we're gonna head over to C-one.
C-one, please.
Okay. Let's do, um, item C-one. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment for item C-one?
Madam Mayor, we don't have any public comment registered. If you're in Zoom and would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand at this time. We did receive one comment directly associated with this agenda item prior to four P.M. yesterday from Michael Gothrop Hutchins in favor.
Okay, wait a minute, before we even start, I know we have an attorney client at, at noon-
I know.
Which is about, that's gonna be in about ten minutes. Um, how long do we think? I just don't wanna cut off anyone, and there'd be feelings. I don't want any feelings.
Madam Mayor, I mean, we're taking a break in five minutes. I mean, it, do you wanna just do our break? I mean, so we can give full attention to this when you come back, or?
I think that's a good idea. I was trying to be cognizant of your time.
Oh, I'm fine.
Because you're lea, no, because you're leaving early, and you've asked to move things up on the agenda.
D-four, yeah.
So, that's why I'm saying-
Thank you.
Do you wanna do this now, or do you wanna do it when we come back?
Yeah, although you have a time certain of one for, and I don't know how long that will take.
Mm-hmm.
That's been pretty long, like forty-five minutes.
It's gonna be probably an hour.
Really?
Yeah.
An hour?
Well, forty-five minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
It's, you, I, I'll stay here as long as I need to-
Okay.
For these two items, C-one and D-four.
Okay, good. All right, then, I think, um, we probably should break, if you don't mind. Sorry, you guys, we wanna give you ample enough time. I know how this is gonna go. We're gonna say, no, it's, we're all good, but then we're all gonna have questions and be here a long time. So, thank you. Okay, we will be back at one o'clock. Thanks, you guys. Go, go eat lunch.
All right, let me just grab that gap. Not the block, not the block. Yeah, okay. We will call the Reno City Council meeting back to order. Welcome back, everyone. Sorry for the break, but we just had to do it. We had a time certain of a Reno downtown partnership update, but the mayor had to step out. And so she asked me both to run the meeting and to go to the next item, which is C1, which is the Stoker by Vintage Apartments. It's a public hearing. I don't have my public hearing text in front of me. So, Madam Clerk, okay, oh, thank you.
And Madam Vice Mayor, just for the record, we're reconvening at 1:03. And at this time, Madam Mayor Shevy is absent.
Okay, and everyone else is present. Okay. So, let's see, that says C2, though. I got you. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that. We're opening the public hearing on item C1. And was public notice given? And was any correspondence received?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Proper notice was given on this item, and we did receive correspondence as one letter in favor.
Okay. And do any council members need to make any disclosures? And these disclosures, let me ask our attorneys, have to do with conflicts? Primarily not if you talk to the people or met with them? No, just any conflicts? And would anyone raise their hand if they want to provide any disclosure? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, you said we had one letter in support, and we had earlier comment with caution. So, welcome, Cody. We're ready for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Corey Fisher, Housing Manager, for the record. I'm here to discuss the potential affordable housing fee reduction for the development stoker at Village. Because this is brought from last meeting, would you like a full presentation, an update in the last two weeks?
I personally would just like an update, but I don't know anyone else. Okay?
Okay, wonderful. So, since the September 25th City Council meeting, when residents of Vintage at the Crossings vote came forward, voiced some concerns, we have seen some progress. So first, just how we got there. The City of Reno staff met individually with each tenant that came by to compile a full list of complaints and concerns. Depending on the nature of those concerns, they were directed to the appropriate department within the city or management team with FPI. Additionally, our staff met with FPI management, the property management company, to express these concerns. And then I understand that the management company also held a meeting with the residents, which our staff attended as well. And then lastly, there is some home funding in the Vintage at the Crossings complex. So we had City of staff conduct a physical inspection of the property to ensure compliance. So while some of those initial issues are being addressed, there are certainly some few areas of concern still. And a copy of that building inspection currie sheet has been included in your staff report. I would also just like to note that we do have the developer and some folks from the management team here as well to answer some questions. So with that, I will open it up.
Okay. What, let me ask if there are any comments. I noted there was an addendum to the backup materials. Could you just go over that, please?
Absolutely. So on Monday of this week, our home staff went in for a physical inspection at the Vintage at the Crossings property. The new attachments are the results of that inspection. So essentially, per HUD standards, we use NSPIRE, which is inspection standards for all HUD programs. The inspection did fail. HUD standards are the minimum that we have to follow. We're able to be more strict if needed. But essentially, one deficiency is a fail in the eyes of HUD. So there were a few, I think seven or eight, that were in the building inspection currie sheet that are still needing to be addressed.
Okay. I saw that, you know, when it was added to the backup materials, and it looked like there were different amounts of times to fix different things.
Yes, yes. Alex, our staff that does the home monitoring program.
What is Alex's last name?
Segura Garcia.
Okay.
He knows NSPIRE like the back of his hand. So based on the different levels of the different findings, HUD requires different amounts of periods of time to correct those. So those are from the NSPIRE handbook.
Okay. And how often are HUD inspections done?
It depends. There's not a lot of guidance in that area, except for a minimum, and don't quote unquote, I think it's once every three years in person. Alex, again, Mr. Garcia, has created a risk kind of analysis sheet. And so dependent on how these inspections go is when the next inspection is scheduled. So if there's more findings, they are more frequently assessed.
Okay. So what are some of the serious and some maybe not so serious?
Yeah, some of them are, you know, simple fixes. Let me pull up the inspection sheet. I also just want to note that we did.
There you go.
Sorry about that. The code enforcement officer did not see any code violations at his time there. He did not see evidence of the rodents in the walls or things like that. So these fixes are all fairly easy fixes. You know, the biggest complaint that we've heard is the trash situation, which does seem to be improving.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask other council members, yes. Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, hi. I don't know if I have questions for you. It's just more comments. I'm really torn on this one, because I have consistently heard from residents, even on new ones that have opened up, that Vintage's property management is failing. But I've also heard from people in non-subsidized projects that FPI is a real challenged property manager. I don't know if we have a market problem here, because I think they are the stronghold here. But we expect more from our subsidized projects. I routinely express my support for subsidized housing, because I tell people, in 15, 10, 15 years, a subsidized project will look better. Tenants will have better standard of maintenance than many market rate ones, because they're held to compliance. Now, there's two points here. One, we took compliance away from the state of the state Housing Division.
Correct.
I used to work for the Housing Division. I was pretty familiar with, you know, what they did on those. I never felt comfortable that it was explained to the council why we were making that pivoting and what added level of service would be provided to Reno residents. I think the council, if they're going to, you know, have this discussion, should back out and really hold staff accountable to what standards are being done and letting us all know on the compliance. And maybe even put compliance, you know, results up on the website so people can see when they're shopping to move into a one, you know, are they going into good act. There's a lot of room that could be done. And this was all room and efforts that were going to go on with our tenants advisory committee that we adopted. It was an interim committee for two years, but I think, or 18 months. But they only met three times, and then COVID came, and then it lapsed. The resolution adopting them lapsed. I really encourage the council to think about going down that route again, because a lot of tenants' interests are getting lost in this community. Subsidized and non-subsidized. So that's point one. Point two is, the property where this is being built is very important and longstanding importance to me and my constituents in the West Fourth area to see something go there, rather than what's happened there, which is basically a family property owner who is allowed camping. It's by the ditch. It's been a problem for years for my constituents and for, you know, the interest that I have when I'm called into some real serious problems over there. So I was very, very happy to hear and go by this week and see that they're grading. The fact that they're grading maybe means the project's a go, and they don't need this subsidy. I don't know. I know that everything helps on these. But I just want to let the council know, you know, where I'm at on this. I think that we're not doing enough for tenants in market and non-market projects. I think we need to re-kick the tenant committee to look at their interests. I think staff needs to be more evidence-based to the council on this program. We stood up. And, but, you know, I really, really am excited to see this Stoker project get built. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Reese.
Thank you so much. I have probably two rounds worth of questions, so I'll just see where I can get to. But I find myself agreeing with Ms. Breckus on many of the thoughts that were articulated there. I do want to see the Stoker project go, and I'm worried that continued delays in this process really inhibit or prevent that project from going, because as we hit winter, I'm worried that they won't be able to continue on the critical path that they have. But it's sort of a different question, right? So I want to see a project built there. I believe that the project that we stood up to allow for these fee reductions is a good one and that we should do everything we have in our power to encourage the construction of quality, affordable housing. So that being the case, I want to talk very specifically about some of the concerns raised by constituents. Ms. Duer has graciously been involved in these issues a lot longer than I have, and I have a high degree of trust in her thoughtfulness about the process. While we may disagree ultimately on an outcome, I know that she's working very hard for those residents, and I want to try to lean into that as well. So I went out to this project site here out south. It took me a little while to get there, because I don't know that area as well. And I was imagining arriving at, you know, a dilapidated and really horrible project. And what I found was quite the opposite. And I understand that some of the things which the residents have complained about maybe are not visible, meaning I did not go into anyone's apartment. But what I did is I walked every floor of the building. I went up and down the elevators, different points in the building. I looked at the community rooms, and I was quite frankly blown away. There are rooms there where art happens. There are opportunities for the residents to engage in crafts and billiards, movie night, theater, popcorn, a lot of great things. So I'm sort of trying to square that with the concerns raised by the residents. And I also know that when Ms. Duer, and I think Madam Mayor, asked for a number of things in the last couple of weeks as we've gone through this process, that the folks there at both the Vintage ownership and I think FPI have worked on the corrective plan. So as I understand it, Corey, you indicated that we sent out an inspector, and what you found was, sounds like sort of what I found, which is it's a very nice property, but needs a bit of TLC to get some carpets cleaned here and there, address some issues regarding trash. The trash in the building is rather unique, because it's a four-story building, and people from the fourth floor get to dump their garbage down a chute into a very tiny garbage can. And I'm just not sure this was a great design, or maybe it's a design flaw, I don't know. But I'm told that those things are being worked out. My understanding, though, is that there were no code compliance issues. There were no life safety issues that were addressed, that the things that you're looking for corrective action on are essentially, we'll just call it cosmetic. And for my part, I don't think that those should be a reason to not move forward with an entirely different project in a different part of town's efforts, because I think we need desperately, so very desperately, to have more affordable housing options. And look, if I was in the position of needing affordable housing and I saw the property that I saw out there on Old Virginia, South Virginia Road, it's a very beautiful place. And I think the tenants who I interacted with responded very similarly.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. What is our responsibility in the city between Vintage and the property management company? Because Vintage is the applicant, as I understand. And they are looking, as Mr. Reese said, at a building, more affordable housing at a different place. I don't know if they're going to use FPI or anything, but what is, it sounds like we had HUD, there was a HUD inspection and code enforcement went through it. So what is our responsibility at holding Vintage responsible for FPI? That's my first question. My second question is, on the sewer credits, it looks like they asked for 1.5 million, and we're recommending 1.4. And then my third question is, I think, and maybe this is a statement, this is the last allocation of sewer credits that we have for affordable housing. And just, if you can answer all those, I am absolutely in support of anything we can do to provide more affordable housing. And I think any sort of delays creates a challenge for the developer to get this project off the ground with the housing that we need. So, thank you, Corey.
Absolutely. So I guess with the first question, our responsibility, it seems, is that HUD has specific standards that we can hold the property owners and management team accountable for. And then separately, and I'm not sure if, it doesn't look like he's here, but code enforcement has their own separate, of course, due diligence items that they need. We don't have any kind of, at least from the housing and neighborhood development side, any kind of way, a specific way that we're supposed to handle management companies in conjunction with developers. So there's nothing besides really our home inspections that we can hold them to from a housing perspective. But code enforcement may be different. I don't want to speak for them.
So on that point, is it acceptable for my position to be looking at this agenda item from the applicant, from Vintage, and looking at their track record and what they're doing in making that decision? Do you feel that we have adequately, at least at this point, addressed the concerns of the residents that we've heard?
I do personally. Yeah. Feel that we have done our due diligence to make sure that those concerns have been addressed from the City of Reno perspective. And as Councilman Reese mentioned, most of the findings from the inspection are nothing that is a health and safety hazard. So they are more, you know, ceilings, tape on the ceilings, just kind of smaller aesthetic things that we have found. So I do feel that we've done our due diligence in that manner.
Okay. I might have to wait to answer my questions for the next round.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
All right, thanks. You know, I have some more questions, too. I just want to make a comment. What's happened since we last took this up? I actually went out. The Vintage group had a meeting the very next day, already scheduled for several weeks out on the Thursday after our meeting. And they met, there was probably 50 residents there, I want to say. They came to address a number of things. Again, this was set up in advance. But I had been informed of the meeting some weeks before, so I decided, well, let me pop out. And I was really happy to see Dane Hilliard there, too, and several members of FPI. So that was a good sign they were taking things seriously. After the meeting, we went on a tour of the building to look at specific things that residents had talked about, about the whole building, not their individual apartments. We didn't go in any, except one lady did happen to open her door. She had a problem with the dryer and also a door banging. And I'll come back to that in a minute. Anyway, lots of notes were taken, and I want to hear from really Dane, because he sent me a note just today on some of the things that were addressed. And I will just share that I think a lot of things have been addressed. And I'll also say at this time, there's still some things that need to be done. And while I know we're putting a minor note on the HUD issues, some of them are things like the fire extinguishers. That's not minor to me.
That's not minor to me. That's very important, that the life safety issues be addressed right up front and be kept current, whether it's a smoke detector, a fire extinguisher, the sprinkler system, any of those fire issues I think need to be taken seriously. Because here's the thing, if you had not gone out, well, the fire extinguishers could stay out of date for a while, and I don't know how far, maybe it was out of date by two days, or maybe it was out of date by two years. That's not information I have. Maybe that's information you have.
I don't have that right now, but I can certainly get that.
Yeah. So my point here is that in these lists, some I think are life safety related and some are, as you said, they have to patch a hole in the wall, right? Not that big of a deal. There were other things, and I'm really pleased at the work that got done in just these last two weeks. A lot of work's been happening at this property. There's still more things that have to be done, and maybe it's not apparent because there's things on order, back order. It's going to take some number of weeks to parts come in and those kind of things, right? So I will just tell you where I'm at. After I looked at your HUD list, and my understanding, the reason you took that over was the state wasn't doing a very thorough HUD inspection. It was very minimal and maybe not even done on schedule, off schedule. And that was problematic, so I was glad you guys took it on. Number two, you began a process, I think a year ago, of whenever people come in for sewer or permit fee credits, you are looking at, are they in compliance? You have your staff go out. And one of the things is, the person who went out, they didn't seem to notice the trash last time, but they did this time. And I don't know whether they just went into that room this time. But significant changes are happening with trash, but to your point, you just went on Monday and trash still was an issue. So to me, trash piling up is a big issue because it's been that way for four years. And it has nothing to do with waste management per se, other than they need to do their job, but I understand that the property has hired another person to take out the trash on the weekends, which is really good. Only problem is, on Monday, it still was a problem, and they've already hired this person, and that was after weekend. So, you know, it just needs to, maybe it just needs to get dialed in, you know, new process, new procedures. So let me ask, I see Megan Ebert's not here. I know she had some questions, but let me go back. I don't know if you have anything else.
Yeah, I really, really think that it's great you did a field trip and all, but, you know, the sewer allocation really didn't, I mean, did it have provisions that were, that they are in compliance? Did we have those?
This is a new process, just since I said it. The Housing Division informed me they started this process about a year ago and that they weren't going to forward anyone for consideration unless they were in compliance.
Sewer allocation.
For the sewer and permit fee waivers.
Okay.
The sewer waivers.
And this policy, was it for all the properties they have?
Yeah. Maybe, Corey?
I can bring up Ms. Julie Henderson. She is our home expert, so.
Sure.
Hi, Julie Henderson. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Well, the sewer and the building fee waivers are a City of Reno program.
Correct.
Okay, they double-layer with federal projects, but they're city. Do your guidelines for that have a look to all their other projects to see how they're doing?
We generally do it just as a due diligence to make sure they are in compliance with their other projects.
Okay, okay. I mean, those guidelines should be written down. I think a lot of this discussion about the other projects needs to be put off for another day in terms of, well, one, we were, another day was going to really look to see how much more sewer credit we were going to send out there, and that's, you know, very important. But two, you know, really the whole guidelines of compliance with projects. And I would say even design is one. I've walked, I was on a project up in my ward, one of the larger ones, up on the old Kmart site up some in Ridge this spring, and saw garbage strewn everywhere. And so maybe, you know, the city, working through the federal process with the state and their process, you know, get some parameters in, in the QAP, like onsite management, living, on-prez, or something. I mean, I really think those are other discussions. I think here, we're just very narrowly deciding if Stoker should be getting these credits.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of discussion to have about the sewer credits when you've got $350 million project and growing on your sewer budget to open up, you know, the Rizworth. So I think we should just kind of leave it at that.
Okay.
And my concluding thing is, tenants are not being allowed to have a voice here. I mean, the question was, you know, I think really, what is our public purpose? Our public purpose is that tenants are living in very compliant and well-maintained properties when we put city money in, even if it's federal pass-through. I think that's a switch on how it was phrased by my colleagues.
Okay. And let me just, oh, did you have something, Julie?
Well, just to add on to the tenants, now that we do have Alex, our compliance person, going out, he has caught, I mean, aside from just building the monitoring plan, he has caught so many things for the tenants, especially if rents were raised over that 5%. A lot of people have now got credits or refunds. So I think now that we're building our team and building our processes, we are getting on top of that more, a lot more.
That's great. You know, maybe your guidelines and goes into the covenants are, we're going to have a tenant meeting in advance of every compliance, you know, so there's a, the city's going to have a dialogue with folks.
Yeah. So, and just to be clear, I've heard a lot of minimizing of the issues here today by several of my colleagues, but I want you to be aware that I have been dealing with some very significant issues at the crossings for four years. And these are life safety. Remsah couldn't get in the building. The fire sprinklers weren't working. The trash was stacked up four stories high. That is a fire hazard. Still today, the doors don't work. That is letting in unhoused people that, and people that don't live there, okay, allegedly involved in drugs. So there's been issues with, you know, I shared with the council issues where the rent went up from $900 a month to $2,300 with the 30-day notice, which is not appropriate, is not within our 5% increase, is way out of line. I had to call the state. I had to do my due diligence. I had to call FBI, and it finally got remedied. Thank you for doing it. But the point is, is I, I'm sorry, colleagues, but the issues that I and Jackie and Hand have been involved in, how many community meetings we've gone to, there's a lot. And until this moment, I haven't really seen these issues being addressed. And so I'm sorry, these things are the same things that have been out of compliance for a while. And I'm not saying they're miscollecting rent at this point because that issue was also addressed, but only because residents sent it to me and I had to elevate it to them. And, you know, what is our role even as council members in advocating for our tenants? So the point is, is this is discretionary money that we are giving to projects. The Vintage folks know how much I appreciate what they've done. Dane and Jim, in particular, are huge champions. So this is very painful for me. I will just share that I have not been able to get the kind of attention we've gotten in the last two weeks over the last four years. And that's just all there is to it. And I'm sorry that you might feel that I'm taking this too strongly, but that's how I feel. I feel that it's our job to hear our tenants, and even if they, whether they come to council or call individually to us. And I will share with both, you know, my other colleagues, that if you were getting calls from residents at a building that was in Ward One, or, you know, at large, that, and you didn't feel they were getting satisfaction over a multi-year period, then, you know, I have just reached the point where unless some of the issues could get addressed, I wasn't willing to support it. And that's just where I stood. And everyone is entitled. You didn't have the personal experience, I get it. So you don't know what I've been through, and I get that. But I have to kind of stick to my, you know.
But in response, in response to you?
Yes, please, yeah.
Because you made some comments to me. I have lived this. And two, if there was not a retaliatory scheme going on against me, I would have sat with the staff to understand what our compliance processes are, because they set up a very substantial new program. I haven't been able to meet with any mid-level staff in three years, but you have. And, you know, there's options to understand solutions to this internally, because it is an internal issue that we could stand up, like this guy's going through and upping his game on his appliances. So, you know, I think that internal work is what should be going on. But I don't begrudge anyone, the tenants who came here, I thought was very helpful. But I do think that we're kind of getting astray. It's an up or down vote. Are we going to give the money to them?
That's fine. Okay, it is up or down, but we also ask them to come back and report. And I would like, as soon as you speak, I would like to bring up Mr. Hilliard or Mr. Zicaio to address the issues, so.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. For my part, you know, as I said in my opening remarks, I think Ms. Duer, Madam Vice Mayor, you've done an incredible job of meeting the constituent needs in your ward. Those are also people who I represent, right, as the at-large member. And so sometimes you've taken the laboring oar, and for that, I thank you extremely. I think it's not minimizing what's going on to be able to say, hey, I think that some things are cosmetic and not related to life safety. And on balance, even the staff report compliance thing says, this is a great property. It's doing great work. It's housing people. It's got a really incredible long waitlist of people who want to get in there. I don't think that's minimizing anything. There certainly have been issues that get further and closer to being life safety issues. You mentioned, for example, out-of-date fire extinguishers, and that's certainly of concern. I think if you went to any building in the City of Reno, you are probably going to find some fire extinguishers that are out of compliance. It's the nature of a piece of equipment that has to be routinely checked. Our fire department would really encourage people to check them very periodically and routinely. They've got numbers on them and dates, and you check them and they get replaced. And they work, I think, for like five years out of compliance, if I'm not mistaken. So it's not that I'm trying to minimize at all the nature of that. I also think that, you know, trash is a concern. I think the building has a design flaw because you have 240 or so apartments, and you're expecting people either to drop it down the chute, when maybe the real design should have been to have it outside, but then you're dealing with weather. And I just think it's very odd. The trash was poorly designed. But am I willing to hold the project for that? No. I think you can work through that, hire somebody, go to waste management, work with them to have better pickups or schedule that. I do agree with Ms. Breckus on another part, which is maybe perhaps what is for a different conversation is like a tenant ombuds person, right? Or someone in hand who receives those kind of complaints. I think they do it already. We just don't call them that. And so, and a tenant's bill of rights, a tenant board, which we did stand up, which did not survive the pandemic and met very infrequently. So again, I, like Ms. Breckus, want to make sure that the project goes, that we do an up or down vote on the allocation of the sewer credits for that project. And then we go back and do the hard work of making sure that when projects, wherever they are, it could be an affordable housing project, it could be the Lake Mill Lodge, when people are complaining about their living environments, we ought to be listening to them. So that's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let me just update the mayor. We're on the Vintage at Stoker. We've had a presentation from Corey. The other members are not here, with one exception. And then we're just on our rounds of questions. I was just going to make a comment, and I just feel like I have to. And this is not a comment on Vintage per se, FBI per se, but perhaps it speaks to your issue of design flaws. But please do not minimize these things. When the power went out in the heavy-duty storm two years ago, that meant the elevators didn't work. One man died climbing the stairs. Okay? That's a death. That's not minimal. I'm just expressing that they are now going to install a generator, and it is on order. And that is very appropriate, but if it's left unaddressed, it's not good. A second thing that we discussed last time was, a gentleman was here last time who said his chair tipped over and he broke his hip. They are replacing the chairs. These are impacts to tenants that are not like in their mind, or not a discomfort, or they had to carry the trash an extra step or something. These are serious. And I think it's important when we're giving our money, whether it's a design flaw, if it is a design flaw, it gets fixed. And if it's not a design flaw, that it gets addressed. And so that's just, you know, these are not, I'm going to say again, that the fire extinguishers are out of date. It is, it's serious impacts to individuals, and I want to get them addressed. I appreciate it.
May I ask? Follow-up on that?
Let me just see if the mayor had any comments or questions. We've had several rounds.
No.
Okay. All right. So I'm, you had one final comment, Ms. Breckus.
Question for staff is, look, Reno's saying we're seeing low-income housing tax credit projects, home funds, being used on buildings that have design flaws. How do we get that amended? Do we, you know, we're not going to leave it to our planning staff. Do we go down to the State Housing Division when they build their, you know, their QAP and say, we want, you know, different consideration into the design? Can we do something like that? Is that an avenue for us?
I don't know, off the top of my head, legal-wise, the answer to that. I think we internally, as a department, just need to start having some conversations like these and really kind of nail down exactly what the process is, are going to look like prior to implementation of the next round, should we receive more funding for sewer waivers. So I think that we just need to start talking about that a little bit more. And I apologize, Ms. Elaine Wiseman, if she is over, directly over it, and so I'm covering for her, but that is something that we are looking at talking about.
Yeah, I think there's avenues, you know, this is done in every state in how they draft the designs. But certainly when we've got our own discretionary money and we can put considerations in. So I think that's the way to do it.
To tie conditions to the money?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, the design is kind of a question because it goes through the state, and I know, you know, but anyway, I do think that's the point, because to have that discussion, if we're seeing projects that are being designed poorly.
Okay, well, thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Hilliard or Mr. Zicaio. I know that you've done a lot, and I know some things remain on your plate, and if you could just tell us both, that would be very helpful.
Sure. Hello, everybody. Dane Hilliard, Green Street. Jim makes me do the speaking up here, so. Just real quickly, a brief summary. After last council meeting, Jim and I ran down immediately after to the project, and I was expecting to see a lot worse than we saw. But we did meet randomly with tenants as they were, as we were walking the hallways. We walked all the hallways, elevators, everything, trash room, tried to get a feel for it. There is a seismic seam covering that has fallen apart, which is a construction defect that we're going after the general contractor on. So we did see some things. We also spoke to some residents that a lot of their issues were resident-to-resident issues. A gentleman was here today, actually had a resident, caused a resident to move out. She wrote on her Google that she feared him because he was pressuring her to complain. So some of that kind of stuff was going on at the same time as legitimate things. So in a nutshell, the next day was a community meeting. They provided lunch. I think there was 30 or so residents there. Naomi's there.
Yeah, maybe even more.
And we heard a lot. I would say half or more was resident-student stuff. There's a meth lab in that unit. She's a prostitute. They leave the doors open by a rock, and people come in at night. They disable the door alarms, along with some legitimate things. The door won't open properly on the handicap button. The trash room has a problem, you know, things like that, rodents. So since then, we've done a lot. FBI and Vintage have gone through massive inspections. I've been there four or five times. Vintage and FBI daily. So here's what we're doing. This elevator issue, they have funded a generator, so there'll be a backup elevator, a backup generator if the power goes out. All the chairs in the cleaning room, waste management is one where they missed the pickup, and it's very difficult to get them back there in a day or two. So that's one issue that, there's actually a class action lawsuit from the Reno Apartment Association against waste management now on this issue. It happens in other projects. The second issue is the way it's designed, per Councilman Reese's comments. It's a trash chute, which is normal in four- or five-story buildings, and there's little dumpsters. One fills up, maintenance moves it, the next one fills up, and maintenance takes them out to a trash compactor. The problem, we were saying, was weekends, and nobody was doing this on weekends. So they have hired a weekend manager now to manage the trash. So the trash will be taken out on the weekends. All the trash photos we saw were typically on a Sunday afternoon or a Monday when the trash had built up for the weekend. So that issue's been addressed. There's a lot of other issues been addressed. The doors, we've had a door company out there. Residents are propping the doors up with a rock in the evening, and then strangers can come into the building. So we're installing more of the little alarms that go off when you open a door. It stays open for more than 30 seconds. All the residents have been sometimes disabling those. So a lot of it is resident issues, which we find way more typical in the senior projects. I think a lot of the seniors have a lot more time on their hands, and apparently, we're not sure why, they're propping the doors open at night and all these things, but trying to manage it, but it's not easy. There's about 2,500 units in the Vintage portfolio that we have developed, and we really don't have these problems on the family projects. really don't have these problems on the family projects. The family projects have people that are working, don't have a lot of time on their hands, they have kids in school, they're going to soccer games. So it seems like it's really a senior issue. So what FBI is doing is, everything we're learning here, they're taking across all the projects. Things like the carpet clean. Now, every community will have a professional carpet clean once a year, minimum once a year.
That's great.
Yeah, so things like that, they're carrying through all of the communities. So I just want to assure you guys, Jim and I, you know, obviously, we're local, we're involved in this Stoker project, long-term. It's not just a short-term development for us. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And then I would like to talk about Stoker, if you want me to do that now, or wait.
I was just wondering, Dane, are there still things on your to-do list, such as, I know that you were out getting bids for washing the exterior. When do you think that might get done?
The washing exterior bid has been released. I think it's happening two weeks? 23rd, on the 23rd.
Okay. I know door people have been out. I don't know that they had the alarms ever, those door alarms. They may have.
Yeah. It's an issue, like the door banging thing you mentioned, some of it is they were disabled by residents and the door banging issue's being fixed. I've gone through many times, and Jim and I have, and we can't find the doors that they claim don't work. One sticks a little bit, they're fixing that. A lot of it, I think, is seniors, and they have, you know, they're not as strong as we are and stuff.
Correct. That's why those handicap door opening are so important, and it sounds like you're going to put more on.
Yep.
Somebody told me that you did fix a door banging issue that myself and Bonnie saw, and it was broken the next day. And I heard it was fixed again, and it was broken the next day. So now I understand they're putting a camera so that they can find out who is disabling this door banging, you know, the hinge, that kind of thing. But let me ask you, Dane, you said the window washing, I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask you to hurry it up.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, but we also have another.
Gotcha. Thank you. So anyway, I was just asking you, Dane, were there other things on your hit list that are still to be done?
Yeah, like the generator, it's been ordered. We're replacing all the stripping on the seismics at our expense, Vintage's, then they're going after the GC for defect.
All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Hilliard, for my part, I'll just call out that Waste Management is in the back row. They're a great company.
Good, you can work together.
Ms. Constaulecki. I told Mr.
See how we worked that out? We just make sure everyone comes.
Yeah, I mentioned this to Mr. Zakeo yesterday, that Kendra is a fabulous person to work with, and whatever issues you may have had in the past, those will be in the past, and it just happens that they're here on another item. And so I want to make sure you exchange business cards. And whatever issues you have, if you need me to step into the discussion of it, I'm happy to attend any meetings that you would want to have, or residents will find a solution to the issue that's, you know, plaguing you with, whether it's the compactor outside and regular pickups at certain intervals, all those things can be fixed. And here's the great group to do it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And then let me just ask, Megan, did you, I'm sorry, Ms. Ebert, you were out when we did our rounds. Did you have any questions?
No, I didn't have any questions. I did hear a lot of it in the back, and then I heard the comments this morning during public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Back to you. Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
I mean, I'd just say, you know, right here, you've got problems with seniors and management, maybe you talk to staff. How do you have the senior projects have onsite management? You know? Point number two, though, which really I think your tenants committee needs to get to, is about FBI, FBI and the property maintenance environment in the city of Reno. Because, you know, I don't know if you have a lot of choices on who to do when you go out and find those. I hear that they've got the enormous market share. So maybe an economic development policy of the city of Reno is to see and understand why the market is not well-served by property maintenance firms, you know? Rather than tax breaks to this person to invest, we have an economic hole in our community. I don't know. I think that that would be something the tenants committee would work on, because I've heard for years from a lot of people, there is no one other than FBI unless you do your own onsite, you know, you have your apartment complex, and you have your own onsite. So I don't know.
Staff have a list of something like eight different project, property management for affordable housing in Reno. So they have a list. Anyway, I just want to share with the council, my preference, I'm so inspired by what they're doing, my preference would be to, you know, schedule this for two weeks when a lot of these tenant issues have to be resolved in 14 days. They'll be resolved. You'll have made huge progress on the rest of your hit list, and I would be more than willing to support a motion like that. So that's where I am. Okay, where are we at? Got to move forward. Go ahead.
I think this is my ward.
Okay, go right ahead.
And as I mentioned, seeing the dirt move and knowing that a project is going to come on this land is so important to West Forest Street area. So I'm not willing to hold it up, and I'm willing to make a motion to
Approve.
Approve the request for the fee reduction in accordance with the RMC.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second discussion. Go ahead.
I don't know. I just think that maybe we should give them a little bit more time. I mean, not indefinitely, but maybe another two weeks to finish some of these things up. I'm just worried that if we move forward with this, it takes away some of the motivation to fix some of these issues.
And I appreciate that, but I think in the next two weeks, if we really want to tackle this issue, it's talking to staff about our compliance, you know, efforts, our monitoring efforts, and then also what we need to do to tie projects going forward and some of these, the concerns that have been raised. I think that they will be up again before us, and they will not step back on the commitments they've made. And that's on a track record, working with this group.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, comments? No? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yeah, I'm going to vote yes, but provisionally. I just, if I may make a comment. Yeah. I want to see you guys carry through. I never want to have another meeting out there at that one. I don't want to, I want you to complete the list. I know you will, because you put your heart and soul into Dane and Jim. And I want to be able to stay on top of it. And if I have another issue, I'm going to be right back with you guys. Okay?
But I know you will always do the right thing. That's why you're great to work with, and you've got a great reputation. So just keep working with everyone, and I know that you will get it done, but it will help us, it will make our job a lot easier, but for the residents, and you guys care about them, that's why you build the product you do.
Yep. Well, thank you very much, everybody. And Tuesday at 10 o'clock, the grand opening of Washington Station. Hope you all can make it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, you guys. Okay. Moving on, Madam Clerk.
Downtown update already?
No, that's next. Yeah. We're doing D1. We had to do this one first.
D4, is that what you said?
Yep. Great.
Sorry, D1 or D4 first? D1 first. Thank you.
It's okay, I think they're scary too. I don't know who those kids are. They followed me in.
So one is reading, and the other is sitting here so politely and listening, and are you proud of your dad? Oh. Just tell, where do you go to school? Where?
Swope.
Oh, you go to Swope? I went to Swope.
Newport Eagle.
Oh, and you go to Roy Gom. Okay. I love that. Well, I'm impressed. You two are sitting there just like, what did you do, threaten them before you walked in, Brian?
Yeah. If you want your kids to read, bring them to a council meeting.
Oh, my, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, they were at art camp across the street at the museum.
Well, I am just impressed.
Thanks.
Because I think this is painful.
Well, if they're twice the size as when you last saw them, I'm as shocked as you are.
I didn't even recognize them when they walked in. They are just absolutely adorable. So cute.
All right. Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers.
Go ahead, take it away.
Brian McCardle, Revitalization Manager. We're here to give the August downtown update from various city departments on the activities and metrics that we are measuring as we focus on improving our downtown. And I will open that up. This is our strategic plan, the way this hits our strategic plan is that obviously this drives our local economy. Driving a safe and vibrant community downtown is very important. Public safety is something we focus on with Clean and Safe, as well as our sustainability efforts. So I'll invite Reno Police Department up to give their update. Madam Mayor, City Council, Captain Gerald Hallert from the Reno Police Department, for the record. So going down, you'll see some added metrics in this month, as we did in July with our mobile engagement team, which is our downtown walking team. So posted occupied vehicles, we were down a little bit at 27. Reason being is, we did have a lot more concentration in other areas, which you'll see with some of our other statistics. Towed occupied vehicles were 2. Our downtown walking contacts were 876. This time I did split up the contacts a little bit more. We had an increase in our walking contacts, you'll see, with our mobile engagement team. So those walking contacts, just so you know, those are included businesses, so it's not just contacts with people on the street, it's contacts with businesses. So those are included. We had 26 downtown planned operation. We did have only, we had zero help tickets. We had four applications for help tickets. And remember, that's our homeless evaluation liaison program. So when people come to get tickets to leave town, some of our homeless population, they don't just get a bus pass anywhere, they have to have somewhere to go. So we're not just displacing them somewhere else. Now we moved our mobile engagement team, which has been really exciting. We had 446 contacts, which is pretty amazing. We did make 14 arrests from that team, and then that was misdemeanor arrests, and we had nine felony arrests for our mobile engagement team. And then we had 58 citations, and those were all citations into community court. So really good for resourcing for a lot of our nuisance-based crimes. And that's it for the police department.
Can I get an update before you step down?
Yes.
On goals scored this season by your famous soccer-playing daughter?
She has 20.
Leading the North.
Yeah, she actually just took over the state lead, so she has 27 goals now.
Crazy. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Oh, yes. And I do have one picture, just a pretty cool downtown picture of a police car right by the arch.
I thought you were going to have a picture of your dog.
No, I think the RGJ's put enough of those out. I don't need to do that, so.
All right.
And I will pass it on to Code Enforcement, which Representative Brian?
You can get up there and fill in for Code Enforcement. So Code Enforcement, parking tickets issued. They put a little effort, a more effort on focusing on ticketing in downtown as they do different areas throughout the city. Their service requests received were 32. They closed out 35 of the existing service requests. Cases opened, 19. Cases closed, 23. Proactive cases, I'm not sure what those are, but those increased a bit, up to 30.
Thank you, Ms. McCardle. What that means is that the team proactively initiated a case instead of waiting for a complaint. So that's excellent.
Yep. At some of the activities they've been focused on downtown with parking enforcement, the picture on the left is an abandoned vehicle being towed, as well as some of the motorhomes that they're dealing with throughout the city of the abandoned vehicles, removing those. Clean and Safe.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Cynthia Sparsa, Chief Equity and Community Relations Officer, for the record. Highlighting the month of August, there were a total of 233 interactions. What I do want to highlight is that these interactions could be with the same individual over a period of several days, a week. So when we look at these numbers, we are highlighting interactions that occurred during city walks with, in partnership with the Downtown Reno Partnership. Those are on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And starting in July, which you could see the number increased, in August, we had deployed our, one of our outreach contractors to provide additional outreach on Fourth Street and Record Street. So these interactions occur within those spaces, and again, they, it includes touch, every single touch point, and it could be the same person. Highlighting services that were accepted in the month of August, there were 46 interactions that led to a service being accepted. That included several ID, identi, card replacements, accessing REMSDA services, and one person is currently working with one of our contractors on securing housing, and another individual was transported to a service as well. I would also like to highlight that part of the work that's being done is being conducted by our work crew. That's part of one of our contracts. And the individuals that are performing these cleanup activities are part of the unsheltered community, so we also account for them there, because that's a step forward for them. And highlighting what we will be working on for the next month, of course, continuing ongoing partnerships with our contractors, working with the DRP, addressing service requests. And then I highlight that from the month of August was a pretty significant cleanup that occurred on Second Street and Coonsley Bridge. This is continuation along the Turkey River that resulted in those data points. And I will pass it on to
Nathan's here.
Perfect.
You can hear me.
Oh. We could hear you.
I'm in the sky. Hi, Nathan Ollie, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. Happy to present the last downtown update report without River Rangers. So quick update, there are two of our River Rangers. We have two more to hire still, but two have started already. And here are the numbers from August. You can see some increased downtown park site visits by the River Rangers and Park Rangers that, you know, currently Park Rangers are now moving into River Rangers. And then the yards of debris, 52.25. There's been a lot of focus and work, along with the Clean and Safe team, to identify and quickly, quickly set up that debris removal. The public interactions are also increasing. As you've seen, we fixed some of our reporting issues that we were having in previous months. Service referrals, as you can see, at 67, and then the instances of all clear locations, which are continuing to be tracked as a measure of our efficacy with the positions. So again, as I mentioned at the beginning, we're very excited to come back in September and report what River Rangers are able to accomplish now that they're on and focused in those areas that we've identified as a priority, and some other great services that are going into our parks to activate those spaces as well. So if we can flip to the pictures, you'll see a picture of one of our River Rangers, Garrett, who's just really jumped in and started already kind of becoming the face of our River Ranger program down on the river. I know Mayor and Councilmember Taylor got to meet him at our neighborhood cleanup, our river cleanup in September. So very excited about where we are, but extremely excited about where we're going and the impact that the River Ranger program's going to make. And with that, if there's no questions, I'll flip it.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Travis Truel, Director of Maintenance and Operations. Maintenance Ops Team, we lose... Maintenance Ops Team received 11 work order requests. We closed out 11. We had 31 miles of roadway swept for a total of 31 hours of work. Had 160 blocks of sidewalk pressure washed and cleaned for 176 hours of work. 163 hours of litter removal went into downtown. We had five street light repairs that needed to be performed over this last month, which is actually significantly down, so I'd like to thank the citizens of Reno for driving So I'd like to thank the citizens of Reno for driving better and not hitting our lights any longer. We had probably some highlights that I'd like to quickly bring up is that we repainted the bases of the Reno Arch in the same time period. And we also completed the Turkey River Lane lighting project. And quick pictures, we put in the Rainbow Crosswalk for the Pride Parade a few weeks ago. And Lamar on the right there is taking care of some of the cleaning, touch-up work and painting that we do regularly on our infrastructure downtown. Pass it off to DRP.
You know, I never really realized, like, you guys are also sort of artists in some ways with some of the things that I've seen.
If you mean that by using a rattle can to spray paint steel, yes.
No, but you've built things and like, I mean, it's really sort of fascinating. I want to come and like hang out there and just like go on a ride along and see all the-
Happy to.
I would love that because I don't think I ever realized, like, there's a whole creative side to what you do.
There is. There is. We put people frequently in positions that aren't, that isn't their forte, but it's amazing to see them kind of flourish in that space.
Yeah, it's super cool. Good job. Yeah, the metal containers. Because you know what I really want you to build is planters. I need planters, like big planters.
Well, we started on that.
That artists can paint on.
It's something we actually started on. We kind of did it as a low-key project. We, I think I brought it up the last briefing, but it's something we're pretty proud of because we built these decorative planters to go around a lot of the planter boxes downtown. And one of the things that was really cool about the few we've built is that they actually, we had them made where they emphasize the different legacy events in downtown. So if you look at them, you'll see air races, or pardon me, in this case, it was balloon races, Hottus Nights, street vibes, and the logos on them. And it kind of just helps tie in Reno to the downtown.
I love that. See, that's very artistic.
We're going to continue to do that as long as you guys feel it's a-
Good, we're going to knock on your door and ask you to help us with our planters.
Happy to do it.
Thanks, Travis. Good job. All right, your turn.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I know you guys have a full agenda. Neoma Jordan, for the record, Executive Director of the Downtown Reno Partnership. Just pull up some stats here. You can see some of the work that we do in coordination with our current 28 ambassadors on our way to 36. We have secured, security guard ambassadors that will deploy by the end of this month. So we're pretty excited about that. And we'll have two on day, two on swing, and two overnight. So we are expanding our fleet of personnel. And we're excited to have those out on the street. Just some of the stats. Councilwoman Ebert had asked about the trending of some of the homeless numbers. And I have to tell you, that's a, that's a really difficult thing to track because it's so fluid and it changes so frequently. We ask a series of questions and we try to garner as much data as we can from those that we interface with. And the trend is that there's not a definable trend. So what it means is we ask individuals, you know, where did you come from? How did you get here? You know, why'd you choose Reno, those sorts of things? And I have about 130 surveys. And the trend is it's everything imaginable. And it's, it's not that we're seeing a huge spike in the homeless numbers. It just ebbs and flows. A couple of weeks ago, it looked like there was a fairly substantial increase. And then recently, it has died back down again. So it's a really difficult thing. And I know that's not a solid answer, but that's the real answer. So I thought that question was a very good one. So thank you for asking that. Again, the pounds of trash. We are doing a lot of work in cleaning up large and small trash all day, every day, and night. And then we provide a number of rides to the different shelters and services. And I wanted to give a little bit of a breakdown on this just for, just, and this isn't the total numbers, but just some breakdowns of some of the numbers for a month is on average about 20 individuals are going to, excuse me, 26 individuals are going to the CARES campus. Seven to 10 are going to our place. Five to seven go to Reno Behavioral Health. Nine or so go to the Social Security Office. A few go to the DMV, and a few are one-offs that go to a variety of places. So that's kind of just the breakdown where you can see the larger numbers and where they're going. And then we have on average about 20 individuals that are new entries into our homeless management information system. That's the regional database where everybody can, from agency to agency, can track sort of what's happening with individuals and the services that they may need. So with that, Madam Mayor, we, and council members, we have been at a number of different events. We do our luncheon learns. We just did one for the Arts and Culture Group in downtown. And we will start back. We started with the residents, and we will start again with another luncheon learn with the residents. And you can see here the ambassadors that are doing tough work in tough conditions every day and out there at every special event. And like I said, we're excited about the new security ambassadors coming on. And we are getting ready to launch our Positively Downtown campaign next Wednesday. So just keep your eyes peeled. It's about ready to launch. Thank you.
Good. Just really quickly. We were at our cleanup and I came across a young man who was very, very nice, very kind. And he didn't have any shoes on, and so we started to talk. And Carson City had brought him to Reno. Are you keeping track of that data?
Because- We are.
I think it becomes challenging when we become the provider to subsidize for all the other areas. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping track of that data because it's, it really puts a hardship on us when we see that, so.
It really does. And I think that's important information. I know there are different entities and agencies that are tracking that. And that was part of our gathering of information to see trends. We saw a little bit of trends of maybe some coming from correctional facilities out of Elko at one point. We have heard some coming from other smaller jurisdictions coming to our region. And again, those were, we'd see a few, and then it would kind of, it wouldn't be a huge trend. But we are gathering, continuing to gather that information. And I know there are other agencies doing the same. And I think once we get it all compiled, then I think the trends will really start to show themselves that the services we have here are fantastic. But the taxpayers of this region are the ones that are paying for those services. And they're not necessarily for those to be busing people in from other jurisdictions outside of the region.
Anyway, you jumped in, called you guys right away. I would say like within five minutes, you guys were there and got him services. And he was very, very grateful. He was just very sweet and kind, but you guys did a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
So we are very fortunate to have the resources of all of you guys working on this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right. And last up is our revitalization efforts. Ballpark apartments and the vintage at Washington Station. So we're making headway there. New businesses open. However, there are nine new businesses that are currently in process of opening. Teriyaki Madness Planet Smoothie has opened. We have Yuzu Sushi coming. We have Chapo's. We have a new bodega moving into the old Reno Mart spot. Birdies is coming along. Fo-77 Number Two is coming, as well as a bakery and a creamery across from the courthouse. So things are in progress. Businesses are coming downtown. Property values have not changed. We are almost at the end of our events season, but we're still tracking 30% year-over-year increase in special events. And we've hosted about 40 unique new events in the downtown area. And participating at those specific events between Dancing on the River and Flicks on the Bricks were 538 people.
Good.
We set a goal to reach out to existing property owners. We've talked to eight of 11 of the property owners on Virginia Street. And from those conversations, Madam Mayor, Segal, I remember seeing renderings of the proposed mural. And after that meeting, they said we'd get a mural, and they in fact delivered on the mural. It is beautiful.
Isn't it awesome?
It's amazing. It is, I didn't think it would come out to be as-
Grand.
As grand as it is. Yes, it's very nice. And we did host the Flicks on the Bricks in West Street Plaza. I believe the movie was either Jurassic Park or Speed or Top Gun, one of those. But yeah, those are great. Now that people got, were aware of them, more and more people have turned out to those events. We have the same event scheduled for next year. I think we have 71 special activities planned in our plazas for next year.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. I love the downtown report more than anything. And I just want to shout out to the Segal mural because they are actually going to be the ones that really launch momentum of arts and culture downtown with the bid. I was going to say Councilwoman Jordan. She has some exciting things that are happening really big in the arts. But I want to say thank you to the Segal mural. Because of them, more people are realizing the possibility of their properties, getting them cleaned up, and also putting, investing in arts and culture. So it's made a huge difference. So thank you. Good job. All right, any questions? Go right ahead.
I just have a couple of comments and then maybe one question. Thank you so much. I really enjoy this report. It is very informative to me. The first comments I have are, I was able to do a code enforcement walk with Zach this week. And I would, I think it's just fantastic, the work that he's doing downtown. I think some of the proactive code enforcement cases that we're seeing are a direct correlation to what the work he is doing. And I think he has a great partnership with the businesses, so I'm very excited about that. I'm the first to say I was a little hesitant about the rolling recreation fan, but it has transformed Barbara Bennett Park in the last two weeks. Thank you very much, Parks and Rec, and the people, the River Rangers that are there. We get to see kids and families out there, so that has made a huge difference. And then I would also like to say thank you to everybody who is involved in the Eden operation. It has made a big difference downtown for the neighbors. I know that was a combined effort of many, many people. So appreciate that. I feel that the people downtown are being heard, and that means a lot to us. One area that gives me concern, and I brought it up last time, is the people that aren't receiving services. And this is not a detriment or disparagement to our team. I'm just wondering, do we need to talk about this in a different setting? If we're seeing 187 people that are declining services, is there something that we can do as a region, maybe not just the city? And Cynthia, I'm looking at you because you're the expert in this. If, is there something that you think that we might need to be doing to work with those 187 people? Is it transitional housing? I brought this up, a zero barrier shelter. I don't have the answers, but when we keep seeing the number go up and the resources are out there, I just have concerns. We don't want anybody on the streets.
Just to echo what I've shared, I mean, it certainly-
Can you hear me? Oh. The information Neoma highlighted is it's very evident in the community that the trends are different. The needs are different. But I also do want to stress that the 187, those are all interactions. And that could be, you know, connecting with the same person over multiple times. So it's not 187 individuals.
It's not 187 people that are out there.
But they are-
Their interactions.
Correct. Their interactions. So we track every touch point. I would say we could continue having conversations with our community partners. I know that's something that we talked to the county about quite a bit. We are actively working with individuals that are on sit-out lists from the CARES campus. That's something that our team is aware of. I know the DRP is impacted by that as well. But the, the community and the issues are complex. There are co-occurring issues occurring among them. And I know that there are projects in the pipeline that will help transition individuals into housing opportunities that are ready and willing to make that step. And our team will continue working with Hand. They have a rapid rehousing program. We're actively filling those spaces at Village at Sage currently.
And I guess I just want to make sure that we, those 187 people or touches aren't being forgotten. It is something that we are still actively working on.
Absolutely.
And it might be because we're out there a little bit more, and we have a little bit more data.
Right.
And also, real quick, Madam Mayor, Washoe County and RPD, I think, have done a really great job on Fourth Street with the, with the work that they're doing. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Report is the housing component. And what I mean by that, I want to know how many vacancies are at Village. I want to know Hope Springs. Because I also think that there's been some frustration with the vacancies there. And, you know, for whatever reason, so I want to understand what the barriers are because they have been there before, whether it's you have a pet, which that was not supposed to be the intention. We have, Jackie, when do we have Sage coming? When is it? Sage 2? It's coming. It's coming.
Jackie Bryant, for the record. There have been significant issues getting permission to access the Kinder Morgan Pipeline easement. So with some assistance from our federal delegation, we have been prodding and poking to get Kinder Morgan out there. And we are, I think they are actually going to be out there this week and next week.
Call Greg Ferraro. He represents them, and I'm sure he can, he knows exactly how to get them to the table.
But we should have it open by the end of December.
Okay, well Greg Ferraro, if you're listening, usually, I know a lot of you government affairs specialists, whatever you call, call that, government relations. Mr. Ferraro, we need your help. So, but that's what I would love to see is just give me some stats on some of that. And maybe it's from Hand, I don't know, but I wanted a real grasp on the emergency housing that's available at our fingertips right now. Because I think that would help. Did you want to, yeah, come on up.
Separate the subject.
Yeah.
Were you finished with that?
That, and then, wait, there was one more thing for me. Officer Howlett, when are we getting, I, the walking team? I was downtown for two really big events, and I didn't see any officers. And part of the thing is, you know, we're in large groups. It's a big event. And so I want to know, what does that look like, them just walking up and down? It just, I love seeing officers walk up and down on a street in a city, not just in Reno, but in a city, because it's kind of become a rare thing. Most officers are now in their cars. Obviously, you know, cities are growing, but it just makes me feel like hometown feel, like small feel. So maybe you could talk about that.
Yeah, so we will be fully staffed on our mobile engagement team, which is our downtown walking team in the daytime. So we'll have one sergeant and five officers starting October 18th. But we have been, we still have had dedicated people. So we've had two on that team. And then we've had all, an additional two overtime walking assignment officers. So we have had near full staffing during the daytime for walking. Downtown can actually be pretty big if you look at the-
Of course.
Dependent on RMC statute, whether you're looking at the bid or the Downtown Reno Regional Center or the corridor, they all have different boundaries through our municipal codes. So they could, they could wander, you know, as far as the J or the Goldust West and still be considered in downtown. So if they're operating or trying to work a certain, a certain project, they might not be on Virginia Street or Sierra.
No, and I'm guilty of it. I think Virginia Street is downtown.
Yeah, it's the heart.
That's all I think of.
But you will see, you will see increased staffing on October 18th.
Thank you.
So that'll be like full-time, not on an overtime assignment. And those were those bills that were given to us by council, you know, that we finally are getting on the street.
Thank you so much. Come on up.
Madam Mayor, I did want to say one of the initiatives that we are working on, which I know many of you have brought up as a point of interest and concern, is dealing with animal waste and dog waste in particular. So we are doing our best practices across the United States and what other cities are doing to address it, both from a incentive and a, there are penalties when you don't clean up after your animals. So we are working with RPD and different creative sources to help address that issue. It's not a distinct downtown issue. It's an every neighborhood issue. And, and again, it's a violation of the law to just not clean up your dog waste. So we're working on an entire campaign because we know it's an issue that nobody likes to talk about because it's not great, but it's, it's a real thing. We're working on that.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay. Anything? If not, please give me a motion.
Motion to accept the report.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Great job. Thanks, you guys. Yes, we should go back to D2. Get in order. All right, Madam Clerk. Do you have any public comment on item D2?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do not have any public comment registered. However, for the record, we did receive three comments, two in support and one of concern. And that has been distributed to the Reno City Council.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Suzanne, this is all you. Take it away.
All right. I have a brief presentation coming up. There we go. All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Members of Council. For the record, Suzanne Groneman, Sustainability Manager. I'm here today for discussion and possible direction on a matter under the franchise agreements with Waste Management. For a little background, the City of Reno amended its exclusive agreements with Waste Management back in 2020. The amendments primarily readjusted the collection and disposal allowances, added additional city services, corrected typographical errors, and cleaned up some outdated language. The initial agreements prior to those amendments in 2020 went into effect back in November- The initial agreements prior to those amendments in 2020 went into effect back in November of 2012. Adherence to the terms of the agreements align with two of our strategic plan priorities, fiscal sustainability and infrastructure, climate change, and environmental sustainability. While the franchise agreements, excuse me, while the franchise agreements are quite complex, today's item does not dig into the agreements in their entirety. Today's discussion is on a specific provision under the agreement, which states that the city must provide a five-year advanced notice if it chooses to terminate the agreement in November of 2029, or take no action and allow the agreements to continue until November of 2034. Today's item is not an amendment or renegotiation, and it does not commence the review period. I'll talk about that in a moment. Article 3.1B in all three agreements, that would be residential, commercial, and disposal agreements, contains the provision and process in question. As a refresher, the agreement set forth terms for commercial service, residential service, and the city's disposal service. The initial term expiration is November 7, 2029. The extension term is until November 7, 2034. I would like to add that complete termination of the agreements would result in the elimination of franchise fees paid to the City of Reno. However, today's action does not eliminate the franchise fees until November of 2029. Between now and then, the city will need to renegotiate the terms of the agreements, or put forth a new RFP and secure new agreements for collection and disposal services to ensure no disruption in service or receipt of franchise fees. So this is just a brief timeline that I've put together, just so you understand the process. So there will be council direction for a periodic review next year in accordance with the contract. That's not what today's item is. The periodic review runs for two years. We would perform that review based on the council's direction that's provided next year. And then we would renegotiate the terms of the current contract based on that direction and review, or we would put forth a new RFP for services sometime in 2028. So we're talking about quite a lengthy time period between 2025 and 2028, in which these activities would take place under the contract. So my recommendation is that, is a maybe. So the motion will be based on the discussion and potential direction. You can take no action and allow the agreements to automatically renew, or council would make a motion inclusive of language that allows the city manager to send a notice of termination under Article 3.1B to essentially Waste Management. Those are just the legal names under the contract. And, I think that's it. Yep, I'll go back. I very quickly just wanted to let you know that representatives from Waste Management are here to answer questions if there are specific service-related questions. We have a whole team here behind me, and I'm going to quickly just tell you who everybody is, so you know who's sitting back here. Oh, they didn't all come up. Never mind, there's only two people. Two people behind me. So we have Kendra Costalecki, who I'm sure you're all familiar with, and then Steve McCork, he's the new regional manager?
District manager.
Oh, you're the district manager.
New district manager. He's new to the team, and so he's here today to also answer questions
Okay.
Specific to the services.
Thank you so much, Suzanne. I really appreciate it. I feel like I don't get to see you enough, so thanks for, thanks for being here. We all know Kendra, love Kendra, go way back with Kendra. So anyone want to weigh in on this? Go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, so I want to let my colleagues know that, as she stated, the Waste Management Agreement was signed in November of 2012. And it was signed one week before I took office. Mayor Shebe took office at the same time, okay? There's a flurry of negotiations with the outgoing council in a lame duck status to redo the franchise agreement, you know, for good or for bad. It was a very complex issue. I really didn't mind them, you know, getting it done for the new council to hand over to us. But it was handed over to us, and it was a very fundamental change to that agreement. What happened was, forever in Reno, commercial refuse pickup, there were a number of competitors, and people had choice. There was no franchise. And this gave Waste Management franchise to the commercial in addition to the residential. And, you know, it was a very big change. And I want to let my colleagues know, the first year when it went into effect, no issue I spent more time on than Waste Management in that rollout, okay? It was in my face every single week, okay? So I know we have a great relationship, staff's introducing them, but I absolutely feel that at this point in time, there needs to be a really good understanding of how it's been working. We've had a lot of turnover. I don't think there's one person from a policy perspective who worked on the old agreement. We've had four city managers. There absolutely needs to be that letter sent, and someone with some expertise coming in and auditing. I was surprised, as everyone, to hear Dane Hilliard talk about a class action lawsuit that some of our apartment people have with Waste Management right now. There's a lot of little things going on around how that's working. At the end of the day, the most important thing, and I really want staff to remember this, because we develop relationships with these franchise agreement people who we're monitoring and overseeing, but at the end of the day, this is a big household cost for all of our Reno residents and our commercial people, okay? We hear about rent burden and household cost burden people all day long, housing affordability. Well, whether or not your rent check, which may be escalating or may not, it's got built in what you're paying to Waste Management. And we have the ability to make sure that it is being very fair to our residents. And this two-year review, which is being thrown out here as something we could do, it has not done the detail that needs to occur. So there's a lot. I think there's things on Waste Management's side that they'd like. I know, you know, those stickers, I think, are very hard on their Teamster workforce, because they have to come out of the car and pick those up, you know? I think there's things that we could work with them. I think they've been a good partner. But we need to argue from a position of strength, and that position of strength is saying right now, city manager, we're going to terminate, and we're going to, and bring staff back up within a month or so to outline a process to understand how we want to go forward in releasing the RFP, or we could still re-up the agreement. Yeah. Well, I mean, I just, you know, I'm at the end here, but I've got all the history of this. Yeah, yeah. So I am, you know, I want to hear from my colleagues, but I want to impart to them what a big issue this has been, and this is a housing cost. Please remember this is a housing cost. Thank you.
Yeah, so I also have received a lot of calls and emails and had conversations with constituents about frustrations that they've had with their level of service from Waste Management for a variety of reasons. And I, I would like to look at other options, and I don't think that necessarily we go with someone else, but I think that we should hear from other options and kind of negotiate maybe better services for constituents. I frequently hear that nobody can get anybody on the phone. I have older constituents that have issues with the size of bins that they can get available, concerns about leaves, like bags of leaves and things like that. So just a lot of different areas that I think could be better. I don't think these are unsolvable problems, but I think that we should not just ask Waste Management, but maybe look for other, other solutions too. So, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I'm interested in my colleagues' viewpoints, because often what happens is you get different viewpoints based on what part of town you're in, based on people's experience with a particular operator and provider. And for my part, I think I have a couple of thoughts. One is, I see Waste Management as a good and capable partner. I look at the kinds of work that we're doing in the City of Reno. I look at the kinds of cleanups that we engage in. I think there's a heightened level, I suppose, of Waste Management's sustainability initiatives that I think align with many of the goals that we have. So I look at them not just here, but kind of nationally as an organization, and see them leading on, you know, helping reduce the environmental costs and related sustainability efforts across the country. I also see them having, you know, a number of different kinds of lines of business, whether that's commercial lines, residential lines, and the recycling almost is a different part of it. So I'd like to see some of that. They continue to have, you know, investments in technology that are also very important to me, whether that's the type of fleet they're using to pick up with, or whether that's the way in which we recycle. For example, I have for some time wanted a composting program to be a part of how we move forward as a community. And so those are things I'm interested in. I, you know, I'll say that there aren't a lot of Waste Management operators in the country. There's been a lot of consolidation. There certainly are not other ones that are coming to Reno, Nevada. So this, you know, idea that somehow we're going to abandon the franchise, I think, is not likely to happen. But I will say that I do not like the kinds of contracts that roll over in perpetuity all the time. I just do not fundamentally believe that that represents well our citizens, and I don't care if that's Envy Energy's franchise, Rems's franchise, the Waste Management franchise, all the franchises should have a continual review. And so for that reason, I think I am inclined to support the, I saw earlier, there was a proposed motion that really gives the city manager some authority to notify of a termination, not because I think ultimately we intend to terminate, but because the contract requires so much advanced notice of it to help us do that. So those are sort of my initial thoughts. But again, I do believe that we each get different views from constituents, and, you know, we're supposed to be thinking about all of those collectively. I also agree with Ms. Breckus that some of these costs really are housing costs, so we've got to be thinking about that more broadly. So excellent comments from all.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I support the concept of giving a notice of termination, because it has to be like five years before the end of the contract. And we have another five-year review period coming up. We've had one, and there's supposed to be another one during the full 18 years, 16 years of the contract. So we don't know what we're going to find during that one. But one of the things that, Madam Mayor, you and I worked on years ago, was we were discussing a third-party complaint system. And one of the challenges that I hear mostly is that they cannot get a hold of the folks in Arizona that are supposed to respond to customer complaints. And maybe those customer complaints are only 5%, but the 5% that do have issues want to get some attention. And one of those really has to do with the fact that sometimes trash is not picked up. They take a photo of the trash bin, and then it's left to the customer to dispute what state the trash bin was in. Maybe it was dumped over after they put it out, and they went off to work, and then it was dumped over. But often, the pictures are incredibly grainy, and it's a good idea to have a picture, but improving the quality of those so that people could see what was really going on would be helpful. There's comments that the trash can was bulging, or the lid was left open, or whatever it may be, and they didn't get picked up. But the biggest issue is being able to independently verify what the issues are from the customers. And again, you and I pushed for a third-party complaint system that was offered to us, and Waste Management convinced us, no, the one we have in place is good enough, this will add costs. But maybe the cost was worth it, because we still do not have a way to independently verify what is going on. So I think that needs to be a part of any kind of future conversation, is how complaints are handled. We just want it to be seamless, and we know that they try to do a good job with picking up the trash, but unfortunately, things happen. So I would like to see, you know, an improved complaint process with a local representative, and they can do that. There's lots of customers in Nevada. And even in northern Nevada, there's lots of customers. So those are, those are my thoughts, but I think proactively, we have to give the notice, because we don't know what we're going to find at the end of, you know, five more years. Thank you.
Thank you. And I remember, we also were pushing for an alert system. Do you remember, Naomi?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think that was an app that came out of Harvard, correct?
Correct.
So I will say, Jenny, Jenny is correct. We walked right into that. And you have a good memory. I remember that was very, very difficult, because it changed. And Kendra, you were not here at the time.
Thank you for absolving your head.
Yeah, I want everyone to know that. Everyone, you know, adores Kendra Costalecki. She is a good person. But she was not here. And obviously, you're brand new. Like, how old are you now?
How old am I?
Well, like, how, like, how old are you in the job?
I've been with Waste for eight years.
Oh, you have?
But only a couple of months.
In the role, yes.
Oh, okay, only a couple of months. So that was way before. But I do remember, Councilwoman Breckus was right. It was really challenging. And particularly, I get the complaints on the commercial side of things. And so I think, too, this just allows us to go sit down, talk about the things that I think we can improve on service and make better for everyone. So it does, it makes sense. It just, it does. And I do appreciate their partnership. Every time I've called, super responsive. But then again, you know, I might get treated a little bit different, and that kind of sucks. You know, I, whether you're the mayor or not, you should get treated the same. So, you know, that's something to work on. And then I would say, you know, you have a contract with the Teamsters, and they've just, I, you know, I'm a big fan. I just see how they treat the other people on my block, very kind, very sweet. You know, I see people leaving gifts on top of their trash cans for them, and they're so kind and gracious. So I appreciate your partnership with the Teamsters, because I think they're, you know, they're really good at what they do, so. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, because I'm not going to be here, a couple of things is, if the council is of mind to, and I'll make the motion if Madam Mayor is ready for one, to give our city manager the notice of termination. I would really encourage you to have assigned staff to bring the best consultant that works, you know, year-round negotiating contracts with Waste Management, to understand the refuse environment. I think at the end of the day, you're going to end up with Waste Management, but bring the best consultant to look at the performance, you know, these performance issues. And I think there'll be middle ground. We've got a real high contamination rate when we rolled out the recycling, and we, that needs to be examined. You may need a recycling consultant. And this is especially important, because as I understand it, from long ago, and I think it's been lost, you know, everything that goes to Lockwood also helps Waste Management's bottom line, because they own Lockwood. So got to look at that. A rate study was never done back in 2011, 2012, I understand. So, you know, I think at the end of the day, you'll end up with Waste Management, but you need a better contract. And I, after that one year, became a defender of Waste Management, because they had a legitimate franchise, and they were good to work with, and I was always going to stand on that. There was no ground for us. But now there is ground to understand, you know, how this is working for the citizens of Reno in a very methodical and focused way. And I really hope the council will direct staff to do a just superb job in framing the issues to go out on that RFP. So anyway, I'll make the motion.
Will you give me a motion?
Yeah, oh.
Sorry. So I just want to clarify what this process will look like if we vote to terminate the contract. Will we be given an opportunity to meet with you, or communicate, like, things that we're looking to add to our service? Or how will that look? Because I agree with Councilmember Breckus that that's a great idea, but also I have some, like, really specific things I would like to work on. And again, I don't think any of them are unfixable, but I don't expect anybody to be a mind reader. I think that I need to have a conversation with somebody about what we need to address.
Suzanne Groneman for the record. So because this five-year notice period was in advance of our next review period under the current contract, in that time, we can have that conversation. There's a full process for seeking council's direction on what you want that review to look like. I don't, I can certainly come with ideas, but it's ultimately up to the council, is that a survey, is that a consultant? So that process would start next year. And then that actually goes on for And then that actually goes on for two years. And so within that five-year window, we now have that two years for that review period, and then there could be direction. Maybe we, you know, that review turned up something, we renegotiate. So that would all happen in that same five-year period.
Okay, so council will have an opportunity, like, it's not right now. We don't need to give you our list. Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, can we, you bring the motion back up? You know, the two-year period is if we don't issue it. So, you know, we've got, we're saying notice to terminate, and then we design the review, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would pass that. But I believe even though it's terminating way out in 2029, the current contract would still be in place, and those terms would still be in place.
Yeah, we'll look at that. But I mean, I think the intent was that there would still be a review period, and I would imagine that Waste Management would be open for that, so.
Okay. But that does not substitute for other rights that the council has in saying, you know, the rates are the rates, but we're gonna do a rate study. You know, we're gonna do this due diligence in reissuing our RFP. So you council members absolutely are exercising the right to look at this freshly anew in any way. I don't believe that the two-year parameters, which are rather tight, are gonna bind you. They can work hand-in-hand. But you can, you can do that. So I'll make a motion inclusive of language that allows the city manager to send a notice of termination under Article 3.1B to Refuse Inc., Reno Disposal Company Inc., and Waste Management.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Wait, that was to terminate the contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what 3.1 is.
Yeah. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Then I voted yes.
Thank you.
Just so you know.
Okay. Ms. Bryant, our city manager. I think we're moving, D4, please. We are moving up D4.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Good to see you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, just for the record, we did receive one letter of correspondence on this item in support.
Okay.
Nice to be seen, as you say, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any public comment? No. All right, take it away. The floor is yours, Ashley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Good afternoon. Ashley, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record. The item in front of you today is to discuss potential reallocation of ARPA funds for, or previously allocated to the Lear Theater. This aligns with the Arts Parks and Historical Resources portion of your strategic plan. A little bit of background to refresh for council. This body previously allocated $1 million from your ARPA funding to the Lear for theater, excuse me, for repairs and improvements. These were very specific to a historic structures report, so we could understand the condition of the building and the cost to bring the building up to current code. Replacement of the concrete steps and terrace at the south entrance, including the ADA handrails. This must be done in accordance with the Department of the Interior standards, which are held to a much higher standard than your typical concrete replacement. Replacement of the landscaping, exterior lighting to help illuminate the building, and the new temporary perimeter fencing and gates in order to secure this vacant property, which is required by our Reno municipal code. Correspondence, this has been a very long process, led by Megan Berner, your Arts and Culture Manager. I'm stepping in for the presentation, but she is available from a subject matter expertise standpoint. Long and short of it is that this building has multiple millions of dollars in covenants on the property that were acquired before the city of Reno came into possession of the building. We are required to uphold those covenants and receive approval from SHPO whenever we want to make any changes or updates to the building. This process has been back and forth with SHPO staff, and at the time of this agenda meeting, before, when we had presentations and information due, we did not have approval from SHPO. We had received a denial for the exterior fence from, excuse me, SHPO, for the record, is the State Historic Preservation Office. We had requested to go before their appeals board at the state level. This meeting had not been scheduled at the time that our internal staff reports were Last update is, we did have a meeting before the appeals board on October 4th, and that body at that time did grant us approval of a temporary fence. This is a covenant piece on the property. We are allowed to have a temporary fence for eight years, and we are required to submit an annual report to the board that shows continuing improvements towards removing this fence. Update on the funding that has already been expended, just under $100,000 for the historic structures report. This is currently, we've received the first draft and are working with the consultant to finalize. We anticipate this to be done this month, and the historic structures report will then go before the Historic Resources Commission next month for approval. And then that will come forward to this body for your direction on next steps. The design workshop, we've currently paid just under $50,000 to this group for the landscape architect and design for landscaping requirements. And then the building permits were pulled. So we've spent just over $150,000. Remaining costs, these are based off estimates. Bids have not gone out. As a reminder to council, this money must be contracted by the end of this calendar year, or we risk having to return it back to the Treasury. Concrete is estimated just over $300,000. Landscape irrigation, as well as the wiring that's required for this to bring this back online, about $300,000. Remaining funds, just over $20,000 for the design company for the landscape architect. Temporary wrought iron fence is $140,000, and then the remainder will be allocated for Options for this body today, one option is to proceed with all of the previous improvements on Lear. Again, this item is in front of you, because staff did not have approval, and we were not comfortable proceeding with some of the improvements without receiving direction from this body. You may proceed with some of the improvements on Lear and then reallocate remaining funds. You also have the option to not proceed with the repairs and improvements at this time, and reallocate remaining funds on other projects. Per open meeting law requirements, we are required to submit ideas for the funding in front of council today, or based off priorities that have been identified. $300,000 for trashcans in the downtown area. A parks district consultant is estimated at $200,000 to help determine what a standalone parks district would look like. Payroll system consultant is estimated at $250,000. This council is aware that we do have an ongoing, still-open audit on our payroll system. And then a smart technology to help with streamlining applications and staff reports that come before this body. Your recommended motion is a long one, because we are seeking direction today.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead.
Yeah, so we made a commitment to this building, and we actually are carrying debt on it, because we have an obligation to our town to pay them up so much every year. And we haven't had a conversation about how we want to use this building, which is usually the first step in, you know, what you're gonna do and how you're gonna spend money. And, you know, but granted, we are getting the historic resources report, which lets you know the building's condition. You know, they have a draft. Like to see the draft, you know, because I'm sure there's some to-do things there to just secure the building. I haven't had the opportunity, I've asked, but I haven't had the opportunity to be in it since we bought it, but I was in right before. And, you know, there, there are things that, you know, probably need to be done, just to make it sound. Although I've been assured by staff previously that, you know, it's not threatened at this point. But when we did our allocations, I was in support of how it was discussed, we'd spend that $1 million, but I thought it was silly. You know, we're gonna do landscaping on a building that's gonna need all the landscaping ripped up when you redo it? The wrought iron was just so obviously not something that SHPO was gonna approve, because, you know, it's just not consistent with the building. So I can see why SHPO, you know, balked at it. And so, you know, we had a million, but, you know, now it's, oh, it's SHPO's fault or whatever. I mean, I don't know. It seems like it's working out. But here's what I would do, is I would say, staff, we want to see that draft of the Historic Resources Commission and see what the building really, really needs. And we can probably get under contract with an electrician by the end of the year, because I think that was another thing, I think it was lacking on electrician. So, you know, instead of coming off and making, you know, the parks consultant, the other consultant, the more trashcans, boy, we've bought a lot of those, you know, why didn't, I wish staff had come forward with, say, here are some general ideas that the building needs if we don't get the SHPO approval. So that's where I would go. I would task staff with going back to the drawing board on what they think is needed for this building and is feasible to get under contract in the next little bit. And maybe part of that is a consultant to engage the council and the community on feasibility ideas for the building. But I want to impress upon everyone the importance of this building, okay? The architect is one of the most well-known, well-respected architects of kind of that early last century.
Country.
Okay? And its significance as an African-American architect is so important. And for little old Reno to have one of his buildings is, is really big. And if anything happened to that building on our watch, you know, you haven't seen Reno get a black eye for being a culture place, but, you know, you'll get one on that. The Mapes was a little bit of a hit, but no one remembers that. So don't tread lightly on this building, and don't do window dressing on it with no idea.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's my, that's my message.
So just, and here's what I thought. When we made the allocation, I thought it was a good idea with, because I had heard that they, we were gonna come forward with an RFP of people looking at that building. Because I think one thing is you gotta get it activated in some capacity, whether it's inside or outside. But you've gotta have someone in that building and watching over it. We can't, on the city side, but there was talk, and they had, they had come to me, and it was Kalila and Geralda, and said, what are you guys doing with this building? And they had the recommendation of being a cultural center in honor of Paul Revere Williams. So I think it is a tremendous idea. I think that we should go out to RFP and find someone that wants to put love and, but I also would highly suggest that the city does not sell this. The city should own this property and this building in perpetuity. But, but have a partner where maybe it's a dollar a year, something like that. Because I think it's special enough that this building gives back to the community. My concern is also in that neighborhood. It's looking, it's our building that looks the worst out of every property on that street, and that's totally unacceptable. So that's also an issue as well. And then I think Jenny made a comment about, she's right in that sense, that you look at it now, why would we do this if we don't have a partner? I always thought you guys were coming back with the RFP, I don't know what happened to it, coming back to find, to get a partner to really love and invest in it. And maybe it was timing or something. I know, I know it wasn't deliberate, but I always thought we would have that partner by now, and it would make sense to invest in it. But I, but I do think investing in it now, we're just gonna end up redoing all of this if we don't find the right partner. It's gonna go like this. And I did want to ask, it says temporary fencing. What exactly does temporary fencing mean?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ashley, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record. The temporary fence that we are recommending is removable, in the sense that the stakes for the pole will not actually be embedded in the ground. It's a sleeve-type of a fence, where there is, the bottom of the pole is what is inside the concrete and the ground, and then the fence panels are actually removable. So that's something, they can be lifted off, removed from a locking system, and then that way, we can have events in the outside, if that's what council chooses to do. To further the point that this is a temporary fence, we will be pulling a temporary fence permit. Staff had recommended a six-foot fence in order to help with, to reduce options from vagrancy and from the vandalism that we're finding that has happened. The current construction fence has been cut multiple times. We have had fires inside of the Lear prior to our taking on, but we've had fires around the exterior as well. That current construction fence has been up since 2016. And to go back to my point of six feet, we are not permitted to have a permanent fence that is six feet in the public right-of-way on the front. So that furthers the point that this would be temporary only, cannot be over four feet in the front. So we, six foot for temporary, panels are removable. The idea would be, once the building is activated, that the fence would be removed. To your point about the RFP, Madam Mayor, the intent of staff was to finish the historic structures report. So then we had clear, eyes wide open, transparent to the public, and then post that with an RFP after we received direction from council to move forward with that. That way, everyone knew what the covenant requirements were, and we could open it up to the public.
Okay.
And if I can make a comment, too?
Yeah, hold on, I'm gonna go down to Councilwoman Reese, and then to Councilwoman Ebert, and then I'll go back to you.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I think there are absolutely things that all of us would agree on. So I'll maybe start there. So the Lear Theater is an important cultural touchstone for our community for a number of reasons. Chiefly among those is its designation and design by Paul Revere Williams. So I am much more fond of calling it the Paul Revere Williams Theater or Cultural Center. I think ultimately, it should be renamed after him and honor his legacy. He was the first African-American architect, I believe, to be a member of the American Institute of Architects. And saving the Lear certainly would be a legacy opportunity for the Black community and Reno as a whole. And so, and I'm not sure anyone would disagree with most of that. What I will say is that we own this building. We've now owned it for a number of years. There were a lot of promises made about the Lear over the years, and there was a lot of money spent just to get us to this moment, and where that money went is, you know, again, water under the bridge, I suppose. But now, here we are, we own it. I assume that when we get the historic structures report, it's gonna tell us that to bring it to any useful use in our lifetime is going to be very expensive. And so I'll just throw out a number. I'll just say $20 million. Well, the city of Reno ain't got $20 million. So now the question is, what are we gonna do with it? And these questions all are related to the issue in front of us, because I think we are started on the right path, right? The historic structures report. We've tasked the Reno Historic Resources Commission, the HRC, with being a good, I don't know if it's a partner or liaison, just an important group of people who know a lot about the building and want to see it preserved. And for my part, I think part of what we've done along the way is we've given a lot of credence to their recommendations and how we got to this historic structures report in the first place. For where we are today, we've got roughly $850,000 left. I don't want us to do everything on this list. I think it would be great to do the temporary fencing for sure. I do think there is a benefit to some landscaping improvements in the short term, even if that landscaping is ultimately somewhat pulled out or changed later. So the landscaping or irrigation, just because I think it is a beautiful sight if we can kind of give it a little TLC on the outside with some lawn and fence. And then we should reallocate the other funds according to some of the priorities that are identified on your list. Because like the mayor, I think the next step is, well, I think the steps are, agree to do the fencing and the lawn, get the historic resources report back, go out for RFP, and see what happens. Because I, my fear, of course, is that no one's gonna bite, and that we've still got a $20 million sinkhole. And then we're gonna have to do things like go to the state and ask them if they have any funds for it. There is a historic component at the state of Nevada that allocates money across the state, has done some cool things in the past. I think it restored a theater in Pioch or Pinachi. I can't remember, but they've done that. I also think that we're gonna have a moment of time where we get to reflect on what we want to do with tax increment financing being thrown off by the redevelopment agencies. Perhaps that's one avenue for us to fill that hole. But at the end of the day, the mayor's right, it should be owned by the city of Reno, it should be preserved for time immemorial for our community, it should honor the architect in a very significant way, and we should have it for this community to enjoy. Thanks for letting me go a little bit over, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Hi. Okay. So, thank you for, for your work on this, and thanks for taking me on a tour of the building that one time. It was pretty shocking to see the state of it inside, and having been through it, I can tell that it's gonna take so much to fix it. And having been on the council for a little while, the youngest council member here, I see the struggles that we have with funding a lot of things. You know, there's, there's so much that we want to do, so much that we should do, but the funding is limited on everything. And I, it's not to say that this project And I, it's not to say that this project isn't deserving of getting all the money it needs to be brought up to its original glory and being used, but realistically, I don't know how the city of Reno is going to do that. And even if we could wave a magic wand and have that, what is it going to cost to maintain this facility and make sure that it's not being vandalized and falling back into the state that it is now? You know, as it's kind of called, the Jumanji Building, because we have vines and things growing in it, and there's water damage and things like that. Like, this is major damage. It's not like it needs a coat of paint and a new roof. It's a huge undertaking. So I disagree with my fellow council members. I know that we've made a commitment to Art Town to pay them. Fine, you know, we have to honor our commitments there, but I don't really understand the, the place of the city of Reno to get involved with restoration on this level. I think we might be in over our heads on this one. And I'm not exactly sure who to reach out to, maybe it is a state level, but we simply don't have the funds for it, and I don't want to see it just crumble away. Because it's not just that it costs more every day to get things done, the longer we wait to work on this, but also it's getting worse every day. You know, our winters are hard, our summers are hard. It's just deteriorating. So, you know, I, I will support your recommendations for things, because I know we have to keep people out of the building. We've had issues with people going in and starting fires and things like that. I think a fence is very important. But beyond that, I mean, I really think we should be focusing on finding an agency that has the funds and the ability to repair it and maintain it. Because, like I said, even if we could completely redo it, I don't know how we would be able to maintain it and keep it open. And for what purpose would the city of Reno do it? Like, what, what would we do with it?
There are very specific options within the covenants that identify what it can be used for, so there will be limited use. It was submitted on to the National Registry as a community and cultural center. Checking Megan Berner, correct? So there will be some specific areas in which, and pretty limited on what its use can be. That will be something that will have to be brought forward. That's also in the Historic Structures Report to make sure that the covenants are very clear on what can and cannot go in there. So hopefully that answers your questions. As far as the cost and maintenance, I can tell you, the city of Reno has owned this building for just about a year and a half. Our cost due to maintaining that fence and the damages that we've had, we've spent about $23,000 at this point, just in the upkeep from a vandalism standpoint. The building has not had water, power, or sewer for 22 years. So we, that's just the cost for what we've got.
And I want to keep in perspective too, you know, you just mentioned we've had the building for a year and a half. This damage did not happen in a year and a half. This has been a long period of neglect that got it to this state, and now we're the ones that are responsible for it. So I want people to be clear on that too. This is not that the city of Reno neglected this, and we've just had this asset that crumbled. This is something that we've taken on in this state. So I just want to kind of call that out too.
So I just want to give a little background of how we got here. There was, the organization that had it before us, they could not, that wasn't their space of what they do as an organization. But I fought really hard to get it under the city's purview, because there's been so much talk of actually, you know, becoming a private entity. And I really think because of the historical significance, we should continue to own it so that there is a way to give back to the community this incredible gem. Obviously, it's costing a lot of money. I would just say this, because in two years, I won't be here, you will get pressured for someone to say, oh, I can do this project, I can put the money into it. You're going to get pressured that they, that we should sell this building to them. Do not do it. You could give them, you know, an incredible lease for a dollar a year, whatever, but all I would do is just stress and stress. I'm giving you a little Jenny here, kind of how you're saying, if there's anything I can tell you, I would keep it under the city's ownership, so that one day this community can have a piece of true history and, and it stays that way. So, anyway, Councilwoman Duer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I want to support what you just said, Mayor, and also what Mr. Reese said. This, we have a role in historic preservation. It is one of the city's goals. Year after year, our history is being torn away, torn down really, in, in support of the new. But this has been one of our very few buildings to go on the National Register. It is incredibly important to a huge portion of our community, whether it's to the Black culture, whether it's to arts and culture in general, whether it's to architects. I don't think we should be here debating what our role is in historic preservation. We have taken on the train center, we've taken on the McKinley, which was an elementary school, the Southside, the Southside School, which we have leased out to the university. This is a treasure, and we have made decisions, and in some ways, I'm surprised we're here today. I think the only reason we're here today is that we had not gotten back the report from SHIPA, which has taken some time to get. And I'm very proud of our staff who went, they appealed the original decision, and it was almost unanimous by that board that this is such a significant treasure, that they, the only issue at the appeal was whether or not we could install a wrought iron fence. And why wrought iron? Our fence has been cut numerous times over, since 2016 when it was installed. If we plan to protect this structure, we must put up a more secure fence, we must put up lighting, we must restore electricity. So I am a little different from some of you, which I think we absolutely need to spend everything on this list. The staff only picked those things that were important to the structural integrity. And no matter what group takes it on, we're still going to need the front porch, we're still going to need the steps up to the building, no matter who takes it on. And we have money, it's been appropriated. The steps and the concrete repair have been approved by SHIPA. We need to move forward, in my opinion, with those projects, and the bid is ready to go out. I mean, it's, it's but for this council meeting. And a final visit at the HRC, the bid is ready to go. As to the landscaping, it wouldn't be installed into the spring, but they've got to install electric to run the irrigation, and they've got to install the irrigation. So, and I think the big vision for myself and the others on the Historic Resources Commission and the staff is that this property, if we restore the outside, that means the concrete, the landscaping and this fence, then we can actually lease this property out to all kind of groups, whether it be weddings, family reunions, Art Town projects, poetry on the steps, if you can imagine it. We can remove the fence to extend into the street, that's one reason. The staff have come up with a very creative design for the fence, is so if you have a large gathering, you can close off Riverside and use that extended space, not just be confined to the space. So unless we do these things, we will not be able to lease out this, this outdoor space come this summer. And if we do lease it out, that means we can start generating a revenue stream, so that we can in fact do the outreach to groups that would like to partner with us, we can make other repairs, but if we just let this sit.
All right, Councilwoman, I'm going to cut you off.
I'm sorry, I don't have a clock, but I'm just arguing that we should just stick to our original appropriation and move forward now that we have SHIPA approval. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay. Councilwoman Breckus, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I do support that. I also think that, you know, if there's any room in this budget, staff, you know, use that as for the draft that you have, probably identify some things that are needed. I mean, like electrical to just walk people through the building in, in lighting, you know, in good lighting conditions, or, you know, getting the toilets working, you know, for internal use, who's in there. So I really want, would like to see what's in that report and see if, you know, if some of these, you know, numbers that are loose have, have a little bit of room, you know, give staff in this motion the ability to do some of the securing the building in a good condition on what comes out of the Historic Resources Report. I'd like that, to do that. And I just want to state, I do think the RFP process is going to be important, and hopefully that'll come soon, but there may need to be an interim step. And that may be an interim step, because I don't know what's in your Historic Resources Report, to have a discussion about programming. You know, obviously, there's the covenants, but, you know, if someone walks in and said it should be a cultural center, but there isn't any baking that there is a means to do a cultural center, then, you know, rather than have an RFP come through that, you know, people then look to the city to support that, I think you may need to have a facilities analysis, cultural facilities analysis in the region to do that. And I'll just speak from experience. The Reno Sparks Indian Colony has always been very interested in having a facility open to the public for their artifacts, you know, maybe there an avenue. The Nevada Museum of Art recently, you know, not that long ago, did a, did an exhibit on Paul Revere Williams. You know, maybe now that they've got their expansion, they're not doing the work down in Las Vegas, maybe they'd walk through. But I think that it'd be important to maybe hire someone who really understands cultural programming and look at our region and see where we're absent of cultural programming, because I think we probably are vacant in some cultural programming, that I think that then could inform people who might be thinking about responding to the RFP. And then the last cause is always to repay the covenant funds. I know some people won't like that, but maybe do a historic tax credit project to make it, you know, a different type of venue, if we are seen to be overprogrammed with, you know, spaces like this.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I've said, I've said these statements for years.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to understand, so we, we have these two, three different things that we can do. We can do all the other recommendations, we can do all the Lear recommendations, we can do a combination of both of the recommendations. I, I want to make sure, the first thing for me is that we don't lose the funding with whatever we do. So with option one, if we spend $848,000 on the Lear, are there risks with losing the money? Will we be able to get under contract in enough time to make these things happen? And then the second part to that question is, is this enough to make the building okay, or is it throwing good money after a project that isn't going to be sustainable? Does it make it look good? Is it actually enough money to where we can program it, or where we have events outside? But what does that look like?
Ashley, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record. First question is, the bids are ready to go if council so chooses to move forward with that. We do need to have bids out on the street no later than October 17th. October 17th is our drop dead date. If we do not have bids on the street, we will need to reallocate those funds in a different way. So that is why this is before you today, because we do not have the option to come back another day to have bids go out on the street. So if we go out to bid, we will not lose the money. If council chooses to go a different direction, we can do that, we just need to receive that. The second question is, this funding only addresses the exterior of the building, and really only the grounds, does not address the physical structure itself. There was a comment made by your colleague about the interior bathrooms. There are no facilities, there's no running water, there's no sewer, so there would be absolutely nothing happening inside. It's.
Strictly outside.
Strictly outside. This would enable us to be able to, if council so chose, to add this as an item onto your fee schedule during your budget process, as a rentable space, much like people rent out parks right now for birthday parties, events, things like that. So that could be an option for the exterior of the property.
Is there a combination that helps us get trash cans downtown and to make this building look presentable or look better than it looks now? And what, what is that combination?
If there is a visual component, the landscaping is something that has to be approved by SHIPA, so we don't have the option to just roll out turf and put in bulbs, they have to approve, which we do have an approved plan from them. As we mentioned, irrigation and the wiring has to come in order to maintain that as well. So that would be one path to make it look good, better. I would say that it needs to be secure. If council wants to keep the construction fence, you can, however, it does look like it is about to be demolished often. If there is a space for only the visual and you are looking for, how do we fund the trash cans? I would say that you could remove the concrete repair as your path forward. That would mean that the facility would not be able to be open, the front, even the, the grounds would not be available to the public because the concrete is deteriorating and there's missing handrails.
Let me just, I want to point out, how this works a lot of the time, because I know a lot about leases, is that you get a partner that, where, let me just tell you something, that building to probably rent out, now, obviously depends on the shape and so forth, but where it's located, what, the historical significance, what the building is, yada, yada, yada. You could probably charge anywhere from 15 on the low end to much higher, obviously, if it was in, ready to go. But what happens is, is you rent it for very, very little, and then they put a lot of the improvements in there, because 15 to $20,000 a month is a lot of money. And someone could continue to put that in there, get grants, you know, really rally the community to also, you know, see something really great happen there. But I, I'm looking at it now, and I'm thinking, okay, I didn't think about it until Kathleen mentioned it, but it's true. Like, this is a little tiny, tiny, tiny sliver of a Band-Aid on a really, really big, big, big need. And I, do I think this building is worth it? Absolutely. The problem is, is we can't even get caught up enough to where we're going to get ahead of this. I do think the fence is really important, and, and depending on, I mean, it should be a beautiful wrought iron fence, so that it works with the surroundings, because what you have right now is horrific. And so, and that also helps keep people out, because that's a really big problem. So I think you do have to somehow secure this, for one. But I also look at this and say, you know, the items on here, like, what can we do today that are going to make an improvement at what we do here at the city of Reno today? That we know we can get out, out the door? Because I was looking at some, like, you know, the payroll stuff, you know, the significance of that. Of course, you guys know, I will, the trash cans are my hill to die on, because if you look at how horrible they are, and I had a very bad experience with one of the trash cans at an event not too long ago, I found a bag of needles in there, and it was, and this woman just pulled them right out. The accessibility of those trash cans are really dangerous, and they're very, very problematic. And they look awful, quite honestly, they look sloppy, they look messy. So I, you just, you know how I feel about trash cans. But the payroll system, and maybe you want to weigh in on that, because I don't know how, what, what that enhances today.
So, Jackie Bryant, for the record, thank you for that, Mayor. I can give you a little bit of context for all three. Yes, the trash cans would be, it would double the number of trash cans in the bid. The cost is $299 and change, so we round it up to $300,000. With respect to the Parks District Consultant, that is a requirement. If this council ever would like to have a Parks District, you must have a consultant, according to the law, do an analysis first. So that's kind of step one. I believe it's also the number one recommendation in the PROS Plan. The payroll system consultant reflects the cost to retain someone to do an analysis of the city's current payroll system and what we would need in the future. Our system is archaic, it's about 20 years old, it's no longer being funded or supported by the software vendor. It's kind of like WordPerfect in a Word world. We have numerous errors, because many, many of our employees have a manual code applied on an every-two-weeks basis. So is it, it's not only inefficient, it has resulted in significant errors for employees' paycheck. And in fact, I can tell you now that we're going to be coming back to you at some point, letting you know that we'll need additional funding for some overtime and per's compensable reimbursements, because it has been such a mess. The Smart Technology Applications is a kind of a Google closed universe system that we've been working to kind of beta test. And what that is, is it would allow for staff to search two different closed databases. And what that is, is it would allow for staff to search two different closed databases. One is for the Planning Commission and one is for council. Over the last five years, all minutes, all orders, all code, planning docs, it just kind of gives us a little bit more efficiency around obtaining the various information that's necessary to support council. So those are the four things.
All right, hold on one second. Let me just make sure, because I got to finish going down. Councilwoman Reese.
Madam Mayor, I think, again, so many good comments made. It's hard because we've wedged like two very different things together. One is the Lear and one is the allocation of those funds if we don't do the recommended things that we had already thought we were going to do. I am of the mind that we should do the wrought iron fence, for sure. But then beyond that, I'm really open to my colleagues' thoughts on it. I'm not sure I believe we should do everything on the Lear list, because I'm not sure that gets us anywhere. And ultimately, I think it's going to be a larger lift that we can address in the RFP process. Like, for example, if we're going to redo concrete, well, what if someone who's going to put in a RFP, they're game to do that and they have a different vision for how they might do it according to the guidelines? So I don't want to be doing something that someone else is going to do, or rip out, right, the landscaping, that element. So I suppose I'm trying to do the, the thing that will keep it safe, which is the fence, and nothing else there. And then the other things, I am certainly very in favor of the trash cans. I do think that the payroll systems consultant is a good one, so I'm open.
Yeah. Councilwoman Eber. Nothing? All right, Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we really have shoved some other thing, ideas. Staff came forward shoving some other ideas, which, you know, is disappointing to me because they have a draft that I'm sure identifies some things that are needed just to preserve, you know, protect the building interior from further eroding. And the question is, why didn't that come forward rather than these other ideas?
When can we, can I just ask, when are we going to see that report?
Ashley, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record, the report is still in a draft with the consultant because they are finalizing all of the details. That will come before the Historic Resources Commission next month at their November meeting.
I thought it was supposed to be a lot sooner than that?
It's, no, this is a six-to-nine-month process. And that's something that the Historic Structures, excuse me, Historic Resources Commission was part of choosing.
What if they're like, and I don't know what that looks like, but what if they're like, oh, you have to tear it down, it's this and that? I mean, I don't know.
And that's something.
I think, I think Councilwoman Breckus brings up a really good point, like, we're...
There's significant work to be, in full candor with this body today. When we say that there is significant work needed on this building, I mentioned there is no water, power, or sewer to this building in 22 years. None of the bathrooms with what they stand today, even though they have no facilities, none of them are ADA. We do not know the ADA approach even to the theater down where the church originally was. There is no ADA access to or in this building. None of the wiring doesn't connect, but it is not grounded, there's no fire sprinklers. So those are just preliminary, and I'm obviously not a building expert. But there is significant work to be done on this building. So December is the answer to your question, would be the soonest that this body would see the Historic Structures Report. Ideally, we would be aiming for probably the second meeting based off of the Historic Resources Commission meeting for them to approve and review that Historic Structures Report.
See, here's the problem, is if you pivot off of $800,000 for this building, it really is a pivot away from, you know, our focus on the building, which has lapsed, because we never, have not had the discussion about the, the programming, you know, not for lack of trying, because I know I brought it up every month, once we acquired it, and it never came back on this agenda. And, and so, I'm concerned of that. I mean, I, and just to answer Mr. Reese's question, the concrete's going to have to happen, because it's the exterior design that's, you know, consistent. If you look at old pictures of the building, it has that concrete stepped down. Now, whether or not that's going to be needed to be there when whoever is the end user is working on it is a question. So I think that's a valid point, but you are going to need to have that concrete replacement repair. I would be inclined to have the lance, the fencing occur, absolutely. And also, you know, so minimally the fencing, and I don't know, you know, the, yeah, HR, I thought payroll's fixed, but they, when they want payroll, you know, more money for payroll, that can be budgeted, but, okay. But the Parks Consultant, I think, which is, how much of a?
$200,000.
$200,000. Let's talk about the Parks Consultant issue. You know, to do that, you're going to have to bring it to the ballot, correct? Has to go to the ballot.
Actually, Councilmember, we are not sure at the moment. That's why we need to do a Parks District, hire a Parks District Consultant to give us a variety of options.
Well, I thought it was in the statute that it has to go to the ballot.
There are options that we need to have someone advise this body on. It has not been predetermined at this time.
Okay, I, I was involved, okay. I just think the Parks Consultant needs to lead with a political push to do that, because I thought it was going to the ballot. And we're kind of in between ballot issues. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. I guess I would, you know, if the trash cans want to come in, I would say work within the budget for the trash cans. Although, my question about trash cans is who's, who's picking them up? Because I always, I see trash cans, I don't see people picking them up on the weekends. So, you know, I would say, if, what was the trash cans?
$300,000 is the estimate.
Where'd you get that estimate? And did you have locations for them?
We actually have identified the locations within the bid, and we have a quote.
And who's picking them up?
Waste Management. We've confirmed that this would have been the allotment for Waste Management, so they'll pick them up.
Okay, I mean, I could live with that, just get rid of the, you know, take it out of the concrete replacement and landscaping irrigation, if that's the will of the body. I'd like to go with the full $848,000, because I think that's the commitment, the good faith to the community, that we are going to be the stewards to get this building done.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Madam Mayor?
Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor, appreciate the opportunity.
He rarely speaks, so here we go. So I want to make sure he gets all the opportunity possible. Go ahead.
Thank you. No, yeah, definitely don't feel like I'm deprived of the opportunity.
No, no.
Appreciate the opportunity to do it. It sounds like we are all in favor of the fence, obviously, making sure that we maintain the safety and decrease the liability to the building. And I think no one can question our commitment to maintaining the status, at least to where we're at. I just think we're all very conscious of the fact that this is only a sliver of a Band-Aid, I think, which was mentioned by Madam Mayor. And I know that we want to continue being good stewards of this historic building, but we also have many priorities to balance. And I think moving forward with the funding for the temporary fence, which was already approved by SHPO, would be a good way to go. And I also appreciate the suggestions of making sure that we maintain a clean downtown and investing in our trash cans and making sure that we have those trash cans that have the ability to provide better services for our constituents not having overflow, which is what we've seen now in some of the pictures that were shared, not just in public comment, but other emails of fires getting started in our trash cans. Hopefully, this can help protect some of that. So in favor of putting the money towards the fence and the trash cans, and then I'm amenable to all the other, which is about half of the allocation, so the other $400 and some thousand dollars amenable to what the body wants to do with that, and understanding the issues and what we have to work with in the payroll and antiquated system there. I would lean towards that consultant, but obviously, open to the conversation with my colleagues on that.
All right. Nope? Okay. Councilwoman Eber? Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman, I think, Doer, you were trying to chime in.
Yeah, sure. I am, I am basically where Councilmember Breckus is. I think it's taken a long time to get here. We have built support, we have gotten approval of every item now from SHPO. If we don't do it now, I don't know what that looks like going forward with changes of administration, et cetera. If we don't do these improvements, we will not be able to use this exterior of the building next summer, or any summer, until we do it, until we make the concrete safe and until we have some kind of grass to keep down the dirt. The trees are not expensive, the grass is not expensive. What's expensive is just putting in the irrigation system and the electrical. And to have the building not have lighting on the building, the lighting will help deter any kind of criminal activity. So I feel strongly, and on behalf of everyone that I've spoken to, we need to take this as a first step. To Councilmember Reese's earlier assertion, or speculation, really, that the building might cost $20 million, I, we've had numerous financial estimates, we've doubled those. So originally, it was $5 million and then seven and a half. We feel it'll be between 10 and 15, and we expect to be able to get those funds, both from federal delegation, direct appropriations, through grant funds and from the state, as well as setting up potentially another fundraising campaign if we make the building useful. But if we just do a half measure and put in the fence to keep it safe, that's where we are today. We have a fence up around a building and no one can access it. So I strongly suggest, and then lastly, I suggest for the other items that are on this list, that we look at contingency. I know we have another $1 million in contingency. I understand how important the trash cans are. I suggest we move straightforward on those with a separate agenda item and get those bought, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Contingency. Do you want, did you want to say something?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I want, do you want to try to make a motion? I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. But wait, talk about contingency. Can you talk about contingency?
Do you mean contingency on the project, Madam Mayor? Or do you mean City Manager contingency for emergencies?
That's what, what are you talking about, Councilwoman Doer?
Contingency funds, we have another $1 million for this, FYI.
This is Jackie Bryant. So every year, council authorizes a budget and that budget sets forth roughly $1 million for contingency funds. We have spent some of those funds during the Davis fire to support the firefighters that we had to open up a shelter for. Those funds are emergency funds. When we do not spend them, we bring them forward for council towards the end of the budget cycle. But it is funding that kind of sits there and is available for emergency needs, such as the Davis fire.
And who makes the call on that?
City Manager.
It's City Manager? Okay.
Unless, of course, unless the amount allocated needs to be approved by council.
Okay. And you send out a memo telling everyone?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, as much as it doesn't seem like an emergency, here's, here's just what I would say, because I've been screaming about trash cans, trash cans, trash cans. I've been fighting for horse fences and historic fences. And so, this is just what I would like to see, whether it passes or not, fine, we'll go out there and see what happens. I think Councilwoman Breckus makes some very good points, like with the Park, Parks District, the payroll system can be, we can budget for that. So I would say, I would like to see absolutely the fencing, I think it's super critical. I disagree on the concrete, and I just know, I just did a build-out with my business, and they had a completely different idea of what I, the needs of my business were. So not everyone is going to agree. Actually, Councilwoman Reese is right on that. So I would say, I would like to see $300,000 for trash cans, because we desperately, desperately need them. And I can't believe out of all the RFP allocation, that I have to beg and plead for trash cans. It is unbelievable to me. Don't get me going, because I get really riled up on this topic. But if you want a cleanly, a clean city, you know, that's a prosperous city, it's a safe city when things look clean and orderly. And they looked very, very, very disshoved. It's actually kind of embarrassing, to be honest. So I can't believe that I've had to like scream from the top of my lungs to actually ask for trash cans. But I would say, and the remainder, you know, could be the lighting or the other things that need to go into the Lear in some capacity, but until, I mean, we are going to continue to, I really struggle with this until we find a partner. And I would say this, we got to get better about doing our RFPs and going out there and screaming from the top of our lungs that we are out there and we are ready and we want to partner with you. Do you know, half the time, people say, God, I had no idea the city was doing that. We do a terrible job of getting out there and saying, you could partner with us, or imagine this space, or, I mean, honestly, if it wasn't for most of us up here, the council members, telling people and hitting the ground promoting it, no one would come in for those RFPs. And then we act surprised, like, oh my God, no one came in for this RFP. Well, that's because we did a terrible job of telling people, we, we want to work with you, we want to partner with you. I mean, I don't know if that's like by design, but that's got to change. I mean, I get super frustrated. So I'm going to fight for trash cans, the fence, and what would be the remainder?
$405,337.
Okay. So, and whatever the priority is, what is it, on there? It's hard to say, because I think Councilwoman Breckus is right. What if we're putting in these improvements and they're like, oh, forget that?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would recommend that, as you're saying, we could drop out the concrete, use that for the trash cans, and I would move forward with the irrigation, because that includes the electrical, the safety lights and all of that in there. It's not just putting in trees or grass. And that way, we could use every part of the outside except for the steps, you know, and we could in fact run it out. So I think, I think that's a good compromise, frankly.
Okay. All right, so that's my, my motion.
I need to clarify the motion there. I want to make sure that it's clear for the record. We're starting with $848,337. The motion is for $140,000 for a fence, $300,000 for trash cans, $300,000 for landscape irrigation, and that leaves you with $105,337 to allocate.
Right, but I have to point out that we have to be able to have the design workshop, because that's what you want, is the public outreach, and you need contingency with any project. So contingency is a portion, doesn't necessarily have to be $67,000, but it probably needs to be at least $50,000 in the contingency.
Can't we just say $300,000 for the fence and the rest in the Lear?
That's exactly what I would recommend, frankly.
Is that what you're saying, Madam Mayor?
$1,000 for the trash cans.
For the trash cans, sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, can I add a couple of things? Design Workshop has continued to do some work on this. They are not doing outreach, to be clear. This is the landscape architect firm that helped to design the landscaping requirements as to be submitted to SHPO, so some of that fund will need to go to them. Typically, contingency is 10% over your bidding project. So if you are looking at doing landscaping and the fence, that puts us at 440, so I would recommend your contingency would be $44,000. And if you want to put a backup, if it comes in under, and give staff the ability to use that money, bring it back to you.
Ashley, if it comes in under, you can just bring it back to us, but I like where Kathleen Taylor was going, where you just take out $300,000 from this budget, put it to trash cans, and use the rest for the Lear and come back if you have anything left over.
This is Jackie. Are you saying that you want no direction to staff regarding what items in the Lear you would like repaired?
Correct. Correct? I don't think we can. I don't personally think we can micromanage it. I think that Ashley needs to get in there with the contractors and move forward, and probably have to not do the concrete, not enough money for that.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to ask our attorneys, can we give a motion like that?
Yeah, I mean, you can, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, there you go, there's my motion.
I have a question, real quick.
Go ahead.
I'm going to second her motion, though.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. For the concrete, isn't there very rigid parameters about what can be done with the concrete? Isn't it going to be, like, this is what could be done, and whoever comes in is going to have to abide by the same rules? Like, isn't that going to be kind of set? It's not like somebody else can come in and say, we're going to do something completely new and, you know, a complete redesign and have, you know, new landscape, like, isn't that part of the problem, is we have to keep it true to the original design?
Ashley, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record, so long as the covenants remain on the building, currently, the balance of the covenants is just over $6 million. As long as the covenants remain, any one, us or otherwise, would be subject to SHPO approval for exterior. So if the covenants are there, then yes. The concrete needs to be replaced up to the Department of Interior standards, so it is not a patching and resurfacing, it is three inches of... It is three inches of concrete must be replaced, for example.
Yeah, and to the original specifications.
Correct, down to the number of steps and the locations and directions.
So it's not going to be somebody else comes in and wants it differently, and it's...
Unless SHPO approves that, or the covenants are no longer on the building, correct?
Okay. And how easy is it to get SHPO approval on anything?
SHPO is very dedicated to maintaining the historic fabrics of our community.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I...
Sounds like a very political response.
Yeah, right. So it's probably highly unlikely that there would be a huge change in, in what gets done with the concrete, you know, what we would do versus what somebody else would do, right? There's any change, it'd probably be very minimal.
I would imagine, again, based off covenants, yes.
Okay, all right. And also too, just, you know, thinking out loud here, if I was going to use a venue for, let's say, wedding photos or something like that, I personally would probably want to use that really cool staircase to rent if I'm going to use the exterior only of a space. So I'm not going to support, because I think we should do the concrete if we really truly want to move forward with this and utilize exterior space.
And, and you know, I, tell me if we could like get there. Because I understand, and that, you know, makes some sense, that there's probably not a lot of leeway now that it's got to stay with SHPO, which is really weird, because like, the requirement, sometimes we don't understand, I mean, just to fight for a fence, I would think they would want to preserve the, the building as much as possible. What about, and I don't know if we have to bring this back or what this looks like, what about if we agree to fund the entire portion of the Lear and then do the trashcans out of contingency?
I would support that.
I would support that.
Kathleen's like, ah. But I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, listen, I don't love, I don't love that, but I mean, you know, I, I understand if that's what council wants to do. I, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm going to agree with Ms. Ebert. I, I want to go the whole way. I, I was looking the other day at our COVID reports, you know, our, our quarterly reports, and, you know, how we, just to kind of remember how we spent our money. And we did spend a fair amount of money in the bid, okay? And this was a real isolated, pinpointed thing. And I think it's kind of unfair and not good process to all of a sudden run in and create competing interests, okay? So I, you know, I'm just going to say that, Ms. Bryant. I, I really wish that, you know, and, and the other thing is, it should have been done in the context of, you know, the overall of where we're maybe behind. Is this the only area of 54 million where we're behind?
No, these are the things that do not require the, an RFP. If you remember, we are under the gun to spend this money.
I know that.
And we did not know until Friday of last week whether that fence was going to be approved. So we had to put forward some ideas for council to consider that would not delay allocating that money, and that's what we did.
Is this the only area where you're, where you have, everything else is spent and you're not going to have another item?
For ARPA?
Yes. Okay, so this is the only, this was the last focus area of ARPA dollars.
And we were at significant risk of not getting the approval, so we gave you options.
And you know, how sad is that? This was the last thing to come through, you know? Is this a commitment of the council or not? So I'm not going to support either. I think we should call for the vote.
All right, thank you, I'm going to. I'm going to call for the vote, but let me just make it very, very clear. I was the one that said we should put money into the Lear. It was really, really, really important to me. It's always been important. And all of you guys, I, not just me, I don't want to sound like that, but also, but in a way to make it that, you know, we're having to fight over this building, not fight, but disagree is really sad. I just gave a way to fund the entire building and then put in the contingency funds for the trashcans. Clearly, that's not the way that you guys want to go, and that's too bad, because we could have done this full spectrum of this. So I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Madam Mayor, I have a question before we take a vote on the motion.
Yeah, I have a question, too.
Hold on a second. Look, I think ever the statesperson you are, which is the role of the mayor, and so thank you for that. What I want to be able to do is, you know, have my cake and eat it, too. You've come up with an artful solution, which is, you've said, and I think we are all saying the same things at this point, and maybe you have lost sight of it, but we all want, it sounds like, to fully fund the Lear to the tune of the 848-337. But we all also want 300,000 for the trashcans. And so you've said what your hope is, is that we can fund the Lear fully and the trashcans, the trashcans coming out of contingency. That's what I'm inclined to support.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
I'm going to ask Jonathan, do I need to take the motion up? No, let's...
So the way, so the way I'm looking at it, you don't need to do anything on D4, except for bring back an item on contingency at the next meeting for the 300,000.
Okay, okay. So wait, what you're saying?
It's already allocated to the Lear Theater, the 800,000. So you don't need to do anything with that if the intent is to come back with an appropriation of 300,000 for contingency, which is not on this agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and you know, I'd suggest do that at the next budget augmentation. That's the place to do it.
When is that?
When is that?
It's every quarter.
Yeah, I'm not waiting that long.
January.
Just, I'm going to be very clear, I'm not waiting that long for trashcans.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, I would support your direction, which is to fully fund the Lear, which has already been done, we've already voted and done it, and please bring back an item for contingency, and I will 100% support it for the trashcans.
Okay, but I would also request that that item comes back next council meeting.
Fine.
You get to set the agenda.
All right. So then...
We need no motion.
So I guess we don't need to take a motion.
I think we've got all we need, and we will be moving forward with the bids. They will be posted to the public, and we will be sure to let council know as those, the bid awards will come back to this body for the December 4th meeting, feels right, don't quote me on that. So you will see this again with the bid awards. So thank you to this council.
Okay, thanks so much. That's fun. All right, Madam Clerk, where are we at?
That's a great question, Madam Mayor. We're on item D3, David 3.
Okay, there we go.
Hello, good afternoon. So for the record, Emily Kidd, Internal Auditor here at the city, I have a short presentation for you today to summarize the first follow-up to the Take Home Vehicles Audit Report, which was initially reported to you in March of this year. As you recall, the purpose of the audit was to assess compliance with documented policies and best practices. This audit follow-up is a requirement of professional audit standards to monitor and ensure that management actions have been effectively, effectively implemented, or that senior management has accepted the risk of not taking action. We go ahead and do this follow-up every six months until the items are resolved or we are not going to take action. The initial observations included these seven directed towards the City Manager's Office. Most of them have been completed with these three remaining completion dates anticipated in January of 2025. Again, we are going to follow up on this, and we'll report back to you on the status of these three remaining items. The audit observations related to the Reno Police Department have been implemented with the general order Take Home Vehicles B13898 issued August 20, 2024, which does include detailed policies and procedural standards for RPD personnel that are assigned to city As a reminder, we're here to promote accountability, transparency, and continuous improvement in city operations. And with that, you have the recommended motion here, and the departments are here to answer any questions that you have at the operational level.
Madam Mayor, I second.
Give me the Cliff Notes of like, honestly, like what we need to focus on.
So the hot take is, we have a collection of citywide policies and procedures that have detailed policies and procedures that we might not be paying enough attention to, so those processes are not happening.
Give me a, give me examples.
Okay, so for this one, let's see. Number two, the fleet management review and approval is required from Policy 203. It's in there, it's been in our policy, but we don't have a process to oversee and require those types of, let's say, quarterly reporting or annual reporting that is included in our citywide policies. So for example, there might be an HR policy to create a list of these types of employees every year. It's inside of policy, but if there's not an external supervisor manager asking for that list, it might not be happening.
Yeah.
So those types of governance oversight things is the space where I feel like we could make a lot of progress.
I think you're, you're totally right. Let me ask you this, what's the thought of allowing them to take home these vehicles? And how do we know that they're not going, you know, to California or, you know, wherever, New York on the weekend?
Right, so you bring up...
I'm sure they're not going to New York, but you know what I mean?
You bring up something in the policy that talks about de minimis use, and we are, we did establish in our citywide policy, we want this to be for city vehicles only for efficiencies, for effectiveness, right? It makes more sense for a lot of these, especially safety employees, to have that vehicle with them. That said, we don't have an internal policy, you know, we have this policy, but we don't have a standards and procedures policy that says how we, how we test that, how we check that, how we make sure that they know. So some of the departments have a form that the employees do sign that says, I will not, I will use this for only de minimis use, right?
Yeah.
If it's not for city use, it's how to get gas, or stop and get a carton of milk or something, right? So when we have that form at a station form, we can stand on that if we feel like the employee is misusing that vehicle. If we don't have that form, I'm not quite sure how to get there.
And what, and what does this qualify when you say fleet? What, what areas are we talking about?
Oh, this is just the, the management of the overall fleet, citywide.
Okay, so that could be...
So in our policy, it's just saying, we need to understand where our vehicles are, and you're going to tell the fleet people where they are every year, so we know, and everyone's on the same page. A step like that wasn't happening because we didn't have the oversight.
Do you have any like AVL system on those?
Coming in.
Do you have any like AVL system on those? So you do know where your, where our vehicles are?
Right. So my understanding is a small portion of our fleet does have that GPS capability. I believe fleet's coming up to answer that a little bit more specifically for you.
Okay. But we're also talking about public safety vehicles as well. So that could be fire trucks to...
Yeah, but you don't...
Am I right?
Counsel, Zach Haffner, Maintenance and Operations Manager, for the record. My team, we're terrible with red paint and chrome, so I can't speak on behalf of the fire fleet. But the rest of the fleet, what we do is, we work with the departments to see if they want to have telematics or GPS on their vehicles. In, in the audit report, it was recommended that we do put it on everything, but the cost is pretty substantial across the city to do a rollout everywhere. So we, we've worked with different departments across the city to do them in limited instances where we're using the data to provide feedback to the citizens or looking at how the equipment's being used for productivity. So things like sewer combo trucks, street sweepers, snowplows, those are some of our more common assets with telematics on them.
Got it, okay. Well, that makes sense. I also think, one, one thing I do love, 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 and a lot of people might disagree with me on this, I love it whenever the police department takes those vehicles home, because it puts, yeah, it puts people alert, they're much more alert in a neighborhood whenever they see police cars, a police presence, let's just say, or you see it parked on the street in a neighborhood. So I, I personally really like that. Anyway, okay, thank you, I appreciate it. But Emily, you make some really good points, so, okay. I, those are just questions that I wanted to ask, so thank you. So can you help implement those?
So that's going to be a budgetary question and a management decision. So the audit said, we don't have a lot of these, you know, technological devices on our fleet. That city has more, that city has, right? So where are we in benchmarking? How close are we to where we want to be, and how far do we want to take that in our current state?
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Okay, item, go ahead.
Just quickly, I know for your observation one, two, and three, you were noting that there was going to be follow-up on this item in six months. Just wondering if you're going to come back and report on those again in six months? Okay, just...
Yeah, so I have those scheduled to reach out to the departments about a month, a month prior to six months from today. So the intent is to bring this to you again with wherever we are in the process in six months. And because this is a citywide decision-making point, it's the City Manager's Office that will be making those final decisions.
Yeah, thank you for that. I also want to commend you on your thorough investigations and all the information that you provide us. So thank you for that.
All right, all right. So I had a motion and a second. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I missed it, I was writing some, some notes from earlier. Do we, do we currently like track the city vehicles and where they go and where they are throughout the day and, and, you know, after hours if people take them home?
There's a small portion of the fleet that does have that capability, yes.
Okay. Is there a reason why we don't do that for all the vehicles?
It's a costing situation. It's a certain amount to install, a certain amount to monitor, a certain amount to keep the software up and running. So it's that whole package that would be part of that budgeting decision.
Okay, what type of vehicles do we keep that level of tracking on?
Counsel, Zach Haffner, Maintenance and Operations Manager. Typically, the snowplows, street sweepers, sewer combo trucks. I can say that literally earlier today, we were putting more telematics on equipment within the sewer division of Maintenance and Operations. So there was, there's more being put on in different areas as the management of those, of those departments finds a need or, or where they find the cost and value to be there. We are looking at, there's a cost to the hardware that can be anywhere between 50 to 100 plus dollars. And then it's also a monthly fee for everything that has telematics on it. So I think everybody in fleet, I, I believe all directors, city, city management would love to have it on every piece of equipment. It's just really a, a policy decision that would, would need to be had of whether we wanted to allocate the resources available to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious if we had them on, say, like code enforcement or parks and rec vehicles, other city vehicles, you know, what, you know, what we, we're using them on and, and, you know, what opportunities we had to kind of keep track of, of where other vehicles were at different times.
Yeah, it's a great, it's, it's a great solution. The reason we've kept it at the department level is because we're a decentralized fleet in regards to assignment of use. So equipment is given to the departments, and then it's up to the departments on how that equipment's used. And so given that telematics is kind of used in regards to how the equipment's used, we feel that it is at the department's purview of whether they're going to use that data, because to just pay for data that we're not doing anything with is, you know, we wouldn't find as a, as a valuable resource. But I can tell you, more and more department heads, directors are utilizing telematics in their divisions. Most recently, IT is, is looking at using that on, on one of their, one of their pieces of equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
So I had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thanks, Emily, good job. Good, good job.
Thanks.
Okay, you guys. Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we're on item G1, which is an appointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Okay. Go right ahead, Councilman Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. I am happy to reappoint Carla Werninghaus to the City Reno Recreation and Parks Commission.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Did you check with him? He wants to be reappointed?
Yes.[1716.33]
Yeah, she served as interim chair.
Oh, she?
Yeah. And she was the chair right before, so she's been serving for a while.
Sometimes I just realize, I think we always are just assume we want to reappoint and they're like, wait a minute.[1646.83]